Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting. Today, Monday, August 13th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Role call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Eauclair.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro. Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Do have a quorum. Agenda item 3, considering accepted town council meeting minutes of Monday, July 16th, 2018. Is there a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any errors, corrections, or admissions? Counselor Daniel.
Under Agenda item 13, Counselors' Forum in the third bullet point, the first, second, third, fourth sentence down, it says this is a non-denominational church. That should say it's a non-denominational program. The church is very denominational.
Okay, corrected. Counselor Adams.
Thank you Chair. Page 2 at the very top, Plan and Development, Counselor Adams, Chair, Counselor Eauclair, and I think Counselor Morales as well.
Correct, thank you.
And on page 4, where it says Counselor Manna, should be Counselor Morales.
That is correct. Seeing none, all those in favor, ask corrected. Unanimous of all present. Agenda item 3A, considering accepted special town council minutes of Wednesday, July 25th, 2018. Is there a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or admissions on that set of minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present.
Abstain.
Counselor Steves abstains. So there'll be seven in favor, one abstention. Agenda item 4, subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Yes, we had a meeting on August 7th. Most of the items are on the current, on today's agenda. One of the items that we ended up holding off on was the Tyler Technologies account, conversion software, Munis Software, which is going to the next meeting, and that's going to be on Tuesday, the 14th, at 6:00 PM here in the Veterans Room downstairs. So I will bring up some of these other items when we get to them.
Thank you Counselor Steves. Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro, he is not here right now. Item C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The Education and Human Services Subcommittee met on August 6th. On tonight's agenda, our topics and agenda items with action included items 13, 14, 23 through 25 and 31, so I'll be happy to read any notes from my draft minutes when we reach those, but I'll also point out that that Subcommittee includes myself, Counselor Adams, and Counselor Daniel, and at that same meeting, we appointed Counselor Daniel, Vice Chair of the Subcommittee, and Counselor Adams, Secretary of the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you state you have another meeting scheduled?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Agenda item 4D, Plan and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two meetings so far. We have another meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock in the Veterans Room. Items number 10, 33, and 36 are on tonight's agenda, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Colonel. Item 4E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I do not have my minutes ready at this time, but I do have a meeting scheduled for 8:28 at 6:00 PM. The agenda has not been set as of yet, but it will be, there will be discussion on the Fire Department and the Police Department staff and whatnot.
Thank you. Item 5, Chairman's Announcement. I'll be very brief because we have extended agenda tonight. There are a lot of issues, and I'd like to thank all the Counselors here that have been working hard with their Subcommittee's as we vet multitude of actions. I'd just like to say, in the next several weeks, we will be discussing some items relative to the landfill and trash, and that'll be further announcements. Also, I'd like to thank the Southbridge Police Department for all their hard work, as well as the Fire Department, the Police Department specifically. I received a call today from the Chief relative to my own daughter's car being broken into and items that were recovered as part of that. Unfortunately, I did not report what I thought was just a minor incursion into my daughter's car, so I guess my point tonight is, please, if anybody's out there, if you have any property that's broken into, whether large or small, that you do report it, because they did find an item, and it would just happen to have her name on it, so they recovered it and contacted me. This individual that was arrested had admitted to breaking into approximately 25 cars, multitude of houses, and other buildings, so fine work by the Police Department, but my point is, please, report anything that you see, no matter how large or small. So, again, thank you for their hard work. With that, I will turn this over to Town Manager for his announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to be brief, but I do have a letter to read from Celebrating Agriculture, and it's made out to the Town Council. On behalf of Celebrating Agricultural Steering Committee, I would like to invite you to the 18th Annual Celebrating Agriculture Event on Saturday, September 22nd, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM at the Woodstock Fairgrounds in Woodstock, Connecticut, with free admission and parking. This year is our 18th annual event. We are planning additional activities to make the day more educational and enjoyable than in previous years. Our purpose is to showcase the benefits that agriculture provides to the region, as well as the challenges farming faces today. As an educational event, our primary desire is to invite the public and community leaders to enhance understanding of our interdependence within our communities and region. You will have the opportunity to meet many farmers and agricultural support representatives who help define our farm neighbors as well as demonstrate the importance of supporting agriculture, which is an essential factor in enriching and maintaining Connecticut's open space. For more information about the special activities being held at the Celebrating Agriculture Event on September 22nd, please access our website, www.celbratingagriculture.org, or call 860-779-0557, extension 109. We are looking forward to seeing you at the Celebrating Agriculture Event on September 22nd at the Woodstock Fairgrounds. Sincerely, Lynn A. Weaver. The only other announcement I want to make is that now that we've finished year-end and we're getting through the closing of the year, we are going to begin to put together our annual town report, know something that's near and dear to Counselor Nash's heart. I want to encourage, if the Town Council Chair, I would like to do a little report about the Town Council. I'm going to have all my department heads do reports about their departments, and we also would like to have Chairman of the various, you know, commissions around town also do that report. So, please encourage everybody to develop reports for their individual commissions and boards, that would be great, and we're going to keep trying to make it better and better every year. I think it's been very successful over the last couple of years, and I think that the citizens who do look at it enjoy taking a look at all that's happening throughout the town. And that's all I have with this question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item 7, tonight, we have one presentation right now. We have a zoning bylaw for medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensaries by Ken Comier, the Town Planner. I know we received, this was presented at the Planning and Development Subcommittee. There is a zoning bylaw amendment that's on for first reading tonight, and I asked Ken to come before us to just highlight the reasons why it was coming through at this point, specifically due to the fact that we already have a zoning bylaw review going on. So there was a very well presented by Mr. Comier, so with that, I'll turn that over to you. Thank you, Ken.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Counselors. Before you is, for your consideration, is a Southbridge zoning bylaw amendment to address medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensaries. I think to answer the Chair's comments in regards to why it's appearing before you at this point compared to probably when you will be seeing the zoning bylaw in whole, is because the Planning Board has been looking at this for a while now, and I think, understanding that and understanding that we are probably one of the last towns to adopt medical marijuana bylaw. If a town hadn't already adopted one, we would probably be one of the ones that fell behind. With that said, I do think that this is probably very important, considering everything that's happening around the state, particular to medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana. As you all are aware, this is to address medical marijuana specifically and registered marijuana dispensaries. With that said, so here's a little bit of background. This whole process has been presented to the public in a very public way, more so probably than any other zoning bylaw. And this started back in April of this year, and we've gone through a very public process with the Planning Board closing its public hearing on July 11th, 18th. As Mr. Chair said, the Planning and Development Subcommittee did take this on at their July 31st meeting, and with that, both the Planning and Development Subcommittee did, in a 3-0 vote, to recommend approval of the bylaw as amended and as presented by the Planning Just, there's a lot of words on here.
Ken, just one second. Counselor Manna?
Sure.
Did you have?
Yes, I just have one question, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mr. Comier. I apologize if I wasn't able to attend that meeting last week. So, I'm curious, because you have cultivation there for medical purposes, but the referendum last year, it prohibited cultivation. Is that just for recreational use?
That's just for recre-
So, medical cultivation isn't allowed, we cannot prohibit medical-
Correct. And I'm just going to give, on my next slide, I'll just give a brief background as to why those prohibitions are very different, the medical versus the adult use, if I may.
Sure. I was just curious.
Sure. So, just a summary of this slide, there's a lot of words on here, it's the same language that's on your motion, but I decided to split up the presentation based on the various sections of the bylaw that are being amended. So we will be addressing definitions, adding new uses to our table of uses, and then adding a new article. As Mr. Chair said, he, we are working on that zoning bylaw, and basically, verbatim of what is being presented in your bylaw, it has been amended to, into the format that the zoning bylaw will be before you next month or the month after. So, to address definitions, the registered marijuana dispensary, just to give a brief background for Counselor Manna, this is protected under Mass. general law, and again, it's specific to cultivation, processing, and dispensing under those laws, and that the Planning Board had suggested that we split those processes up, and allowing those two uses throughout town as those specific uses. When an applicant, if an applicant were to come to town, they would have to show to the Department of Public Health that they had a cultivator, but in order to do that, you have to have a dispensary. So as far as that wider permit, an applicant would need to present that he or she had both a cultivation activity and a dispensing activity under the medical marijuana bylaw. So for those purposes, the Planning Board figured that it probably would be beneficial to separate those types of uses. So we have done that based on using the registered marijuana dispensary as language from the state, and then separating the specific uses of cultivation, processing into a registered medical marijuana cultivation center, and then the act of dispensing as presented in registered medical marijuana dispensary centers. So those are new definitions that would be added to the bylaw. In Article 5, we address the schedule of uses, so as I mentioned, those two new uses would be allowed in all non-residential zoning districts, with the medical marijuana cultivation centers also being allowed in single-family zones. So this is an introduction to Article 19, which would be a new article in our current zoning bylaw. Towns are allowed to adopt RMD bylaws as authorized in the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana Act, with the understanding that it is best equipped to provide its own control with the purposes of minimizing impacts on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, and playgrounds. Approval of a registered marijuana dispensary, so this includes both the RM-MCC and the RM-MDC, would require a special permit by the Planning Board serving as a special permit granting authority. Application requirements would be similar to those required in a review of a site plan and special permit application, however, there would be other requirements not typical of a special permit application, like one to allow a solar development in industrial district or re-establishing a certain use tied to a particular piece of land after being deemed abandoned. Some of those application requirements would be ending up, you would be ending up submitting the same things, in addition to some of the additional requirements here as listed. Certificate of Registration to Operate as issued by the Mass. Department of Public Health, a development timeline, insurance, safety and security policies and plans, waste disposal procedures, and water and wastewater disposal plans, and those would be in addition to everything else you would submit for a special permit or a site plan review. So in Article 19, we discuss site restrictions. An RMD facility shall not be located within 500 feet of the following, or 250 feet if located in the central core, as measured in a straight line from the building and/or actively used. Public or private preschool, primary or secondary school, dance or gymnastics school, martial arts school, licensed daycare center, a public library, playground, athletic field, and any area facility where children commonly congregate. In addition, the cultivation activities under a registered medical marijuana cultivation center is to be located within, as measured in a straight line from existing structure to proposed development, 100 feet of any abutting occupied residence in a residential zoning district, 250 feet of any non-conforming residential structures in a non-residential district. And in regards to the dispensing centers, they're to be, they're not to be located within 200 feet of any residential zoning district residential structure, or any non-conforming residential structures in non-residential districts. There is a clause in the bylaw that states that distance requirements can be reduced through the special permit application.
You said 200, that said 250.
250 feet.
Oh, you said 200.
Oh, sorry, yeah, 250 feet, so no dispensing center should be 250 feet from any of those items. Other site restrictions, they shall not be, marijuana products shall not be sold or grown or cultivated in motels and dormitories, cargo container, motor vehicle, or other similar non-permanent closure, no drive-through services, no smoking, burning, or consumption of any product containing marijuana or marijuana-related products on the premises, exterior signage shall be discreet, screening blocking public view, there should be no hours of operation between the hours of 9:00 and 8:00 AM, 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and if erecting a RM-MCC, a six-foot fence, or screening with security type should be part of that site plan. These following maps are maps that were used during the public process, and these are available online in the Planning Board's pages. This is just a brief map, you won't be able to see that, but these are available online. Basically, this is a map showing where medical marijuana cultivation centers would be located, basically anywhere not in gray. And again, those distance requirements can be waived by the special permit process. And this is the other map showing where RM-MDCs can be located, basically any area not in green or gray, and it's very hard to see, but you see most of the town is the industrial districts where this would be located, minus a couple of areas in the central core and near Globe City. Some conditions that would be required as far as, if the Planning Board were to approve the special permit, it remains exclusively with the applicant, annual reports required with the current applicable state licenses and registrations, updated operation policies and compliance with conditions of the special permit, incident reporting within 24 hours according to the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, filing of any notice or action issued by the Department of Public Health or the Division of Administrative Law Appeals within 48 hours of receipt, contact information for after-business hours to address any issues, and permit shall lapse upon expiration or termination of the Department of Public Health registration. I think that's probably one of the more important aspects of this, is this is heavily regulated by the Department of Public Health, this medical marijuana, these facilities. So if DPH is not happy with the way an operation is happening, basically, they would tell the town, and the town, based on its conditions of approval, would basically rescind that special permit. So to summarize, there's a request to ratify the amendments to the Southbridge zoning bylaw as written and presented, introducing the new definitions, introducing new uses related to medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensaries in Article 5, and introducing a new Article 19, medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensaries. Staff has reviewed this, recommending approval of amendments as written. The Planning Board has unanimously recommended approval of amendments as written, and as I mentioned earlier, the Subcommittee recommendation was to approve the amendments as written, and that was at the July 31st meeting. In the box is that a ratification of zoning bylaw amendment requires 2/3 of the vote of the Town Council, just so that everyone is aware of that, and I'm available for any questions.
You can either do that now, or if you want to do it when we do the reading? I don't, Counselor- Okay. Manna has a question? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mr. Comier. I would, I think we should now, because we don't-
Counselor Manna, can you speak up, because we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I got a big mouth, but not that big, right? So, I have two questions. The federal government considers growing of marijuana manufacturing. Is that how you consider it also? Grow equals manufacturing?
Can you repeat that one more time?
The grow of marijuana is considered manufacturing for cultivation purposes?
Yeah, I would suggest that, I think, common knowledge, or many people in the industry would probably state that that's the same thing, understanding, you know, there are differences in federal law versus state law versus local law.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
I get the conflicts and everything, but, I mean, I did read one of their, I can't remember, I have it.
Okay.
But they did say grow equals manufacturing. So I want to know, like, why would we allow this in residential, I don't know why. Why would we allow this in residential?
I, well, I think the Planning Board saw that, you know, a majority, the cultivation-type activity compared to a dispensing activity, it's very different, and having visited a cultivation activity, it's, again, it's regulated. I think, understanding that the Planning Board trying to be as open to the process of allowing it without, you know, outright denying it, allowing it on larger parcels of land, which most of these single-family zones would be, again, you know, I don't think you would find a cultivation center in a single-family zone that is close to the central core, because the lots are a lot smaller, and they would have to adhere to those various other distance requirements. I think another thing to note is that, more than likely, these cultivation centers would be set back pretty far, and probably on a big piece of property. I think that was the reasoning why they opened the cultivation activity to a single-family zone, which is usually a very large piece of property.
Right, well, my single-family home is not a large piece of property. And what is the acreage?
The acreage?
Yeah, is there-
Of a single-family zone?
Yeah.
So the requirement for a single-family zone under our current bylaw is 22,500 square feet as a minimum lot size. So you would need to outright, if we were going to apply this in our current zoning bylaw, you would probably, if you are in a smaller piece of land in a single-family zone, you would need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow you to even start the process for a smaller lot. But I would suggest that the Planning Board found that the single-family zones, and this is probably for the outskirts closer to the industrial park, closer to the southern portion of town, would possibly be where these cultivation activities could occur.
And do they consider the smell of the cultivation? Because there is an odor. So, I mean, do they take that all into consideration?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, there is consideration in our bylaw in regards to those types of, you know, kind of negative, that negative correlation to that type of activity, but, yeah, I mean, that would be addressed in a special permit application, the abutters would be invited, property owners, I would assume, would attend that public hearing when it'd be up by the Planning Board, so that's, I think, a possibility.
And so, wouldn't, how many cultivation licenses are allowed in Southbridge? Is there no limit?
There, medical marijuana, there is no limit, and I don't, I haven't been able to find literature that allows the town to limit those types of facilities under a medical marijuana use. Adult use, there can be a limit, and many towns are adopting that if they have registered medical dispensary, or marijuana dispensaries and adult-use establishments, but this is not, that's not addressed in this bylaw.
Right, and so in the bylaw also, you, I see that, you know, you have medical marijuana, you know, but you address registered dispensaries. Shouldn't it say registered medical marijuana dispensaries because the recreational use was voted on and prohibited? So shouldn't it specify that it should, it's just registered medical and not registered marijuana?
I'm using registered marijuana dispensaries because that's the way the state has identified the medical use. I think if you look at the two uses that the Planning Board decided to split up, those are listed as registered medical marijuana cultivation centers and registered medical marijuana dispensary centers. So, and really, when a special permit, if a special permit were to be submitted, you would be putting that type of use on an application. It wouldn't, you know, I think it's a matter of nomenclature, and the RMD, the registered marijuana dispensaries, is basically how the state defines the medical use of marijuana.
So I, I'm going to listen to the reading, of course, and whatnot, I'll probably help reading this, but I'm just, my, one of my huge concern is the smell, the odor-
Sure.
-that's going to come out of that.
Sure.
I mean, we'll talk about the landfill having odor, well, marijuana has odor too, and I've been, like, told that by people who toured out in Colorado and stuff-
Sure.
-from our state, and so, and that's a huge- And so, and that's a huge concern. And there's other things that go into the cultivation. I mean, the noise, the lights, you know, I mean, there's going to be, they just can't use plug-it-in into a little outlet. So that's some of my concerns as well. I don't know if it was the planning boards, so.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm all set.
You all set?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ken. Are you going to be here for the reading as well?
Oh, yes.
All right, thank you. Miss it for the world. Gender item eight, citizens forum. If anyone wishing to address counsel, please state your name and your address, please.
Dave Landraven, 801 West Street, Southbridge, Mass. First of all, good evening, councilors, Mr. Chairman, Town Manager. I'm here tonight to express my concerns deeply, and this is a big issue going on in town. I'm afraid this is a public safety issue for the Southbridge Fire Department, okay? There's been a lot of things going on, and as councilors, previous councilors sitting on here right now of how many people left over the last year to the fire chief just leaving recently. Well, I firsthand witnessed a couple things, and we're talking about public safety, minutes save lives, okay? And this is no lie, this is no makeup, this is no scared story, this is truth. Sunday evening, I went right around town, and a call came in. The ambulance was on a call, okay, finishing up, they're at the hospital, to be exact. And I'll give you a timeline, about three weeks ago, a fire call came in. They reached out and asked for people to come in. Nobody could come in, okay? So let the clock keep on ticking now, okay? Because remember, minutes save lives. Long story short is, the ambulance had to release himself from the hospital quickly, get back to the fire station, park outside, jump into the fire engine, and go on the call. Okay? So I want to look at you, because I'm a straight-up person, I am not sad this fire chief left the town. Because we were a well-represented fire department many years ago, okay? Keep personalities aside, we were represented well, okay? I have a serious problem how we are recruiting people in this town, because our reputation is damaged in town now. We just lost, and it's no secret, we just lost three people that were on the call department that were ready to go. They did not have their paramedic license, let me reiterate that. But they had their EMT. They went to the next town over. Do you realize that someone didn't even get an interview? That's embarrassing, because they're homegrown. That's what we want. We want homegrown people. But no, what did we do? We hired a person out towards Cape, the Cape! That's disgusting too, because what is this person going to do? He's going to work his eight shifts, okay? Eight shifts, because that's what he's required a month. And he's only going to come in for the eight shifts, because God knows he's not coming from the Cape. And he's going to use this as a stepping stone to get where he needs to be to get closer to home. And soon as it's available, guess what? See ya. Okay? So I want, I want everyone to understand, this is not an attack on the men and women in that department. There's good people there. They're good, hard-working people. But we're talking serious fire, safety, ambulance safety. We all know, just like any other town, we're no different, but we have a little bigger problem with drugs. We know our ambulance, I bet you our ambulance stats are up from last year. I know from sitting on a council, and I would love to see if the town manager could answer this, last year or the year before, what was the operating budget of the fire department for the year? What was it?
Go ahead. I'm not going to get into a debate, but we'll go ahead.
I probably, I don't keep the budget information here with me. It hasn't gone up significantly, probably close to about 2% from year to year.
And with ambulance receipts, how much do we pull in a year usually in ambulance receipts? When I left, I'm going to say it was probably $1.3 million. And of that $1.3, yes, we use it to operate our town. How about let's using it to operate our fire department properly and staff it properly? Because everyone forgets now, and this is the truth, and I'm grateful that Council of Manna is calling a meeting on this, but this is how serious it is. You know, people look at the firefighters and say, all they do all day is sit around, okay? That's, that's the rap they get. But I guarantee you, if one of you's needed the fire department for an ambulance call or a fire, you wouldn't want to be waiting for someone to come in. So I have a problem with how we hire, okay? How long it took to get people in here, and there is more leaving, trust me when I say that. And how are we going to rectify this moving forward? And respectfully, I want all you councilors and Mr. Chairman, you, talk to the town manager, and how are we going to move this department forward? My recommendation would be, for now, to bring in a temporary chief to run that place. Because, no disrespect, look at the second-in-command's folder and see what he has. And I'm being respectfully.
So, thanks.
Without mentioning names, and I'm not going to mention names, but please.
We do know who that person is, though, so.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is, please, just do due diligence for the community, because they deserve it. The people in that building deserve it. The police department are doing a wonderful job, and, you know, I've said it before, they could use 10 more people. They really could, just in the detective department. I understand we're a financial constraint, but public safety should be the number-one priority. And I'm not saying it isn't, but I think we really need to reload and let the citizens know, because this is not a scare tactic. Let the people in the department understand that you're with them and you're working, because we do have a lot of new equipment and nice, updated equipment, but if it can't roll out the door, it's doing us no good. Okay? And just one last thing, and the other thing I would like the town to start looking at too is, and this is development, you know, I look at Chautauqua Brewery. They're doing a wonderful business over there. And the one thing that the guy, the owner, said when he got it is, "Southbridge's water is the best water for brewing." He's marketing Southbridge on his own. Can we do ourselves a favor and market our water better and maybe start utilizing our mill buildings? I'm grateful that the drum company just moved from West Street over to the mill building. That's a start. But let's keep on going. We have plenty of water, we know we do. Can we utilize it the right way and maybe market it the right way so we could get a brewery? Doesn't mean they're always going to spend all their time in town. But all you have to do is go watch in Chautauqua and see the people come and go from Connecticut all over the place. So let them come to our community for a change, because that one thing could open up another door for another business. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landraven. Just so you know, and I know Councilman Manna wants to follow up, but the fire department staff, and I've made no secret of it, I've brought it to the table, I thank Councilman Manna for putting it on the agenda. It is a serious concern. We will be working aggressively on that issue. I've made my thoughts known to the town manager as to past of what has happened with us losing the young call firefighters to other towns. Because growing up in this town, I know your father was a longtime firefighter, you've had brothers in the fire service, multiple generational firefighters.
Great-grandfather.
Great-grandfather, well, that I didn't know. And the call ranks was how you got to become a full-time firefighter in the town of Southbridge. It was a stepping stone. Auxiliary to call to full-time, that's how we got the individuals in. So staffing is a huge concern, whether we look at outside grants down the road to supplement some of the fire staffing, but it will, it is being addressed, strongly being addressed, and we'll be at the forefront. So, Councilman Manna, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Mr. Landraven. I know you're very passionate about the fire department, just like I am for the police department and all safety, and as well as I know you are too. And on August 28th at 6:00 PM, I hope you show up for that PPP and express your concerns. Personal attacks, though, I think the interim fire chief that we have now will do a fine job. I don't think our town manager would compromise the safety of our town for anything. So I think Mr. Normandin will do a fine job in the position he is in now. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Mr. Manna? First, David, I want to thank you for coming up. I appreciate your comments and understand them. When the, the last couple of years, we've been trying to build up our police force to strengthen it, because we've had some weaknesses there too. And we've set up a new process, working with town council to get guys, get people in before they, during the period where sending somebody to the academy, they really don't help us. So now we're hiring people early so that we can get people through the process quicker and keep dual staff on for that period of time. This board has really been trying to work on trying to improve the fire service. One of the big issues coming forward, and we're halfway there, is eventually we're going to get to a dispatch center, a local dispatch center in the police department. The benefit of that is take the four guys that are currently in dispatch and put them into the fire department, which is, as you know, we need desperately. So that will effectively give us four new guys to deal with both ambulance calls and fire department calls. You're absolutely correct. The money that we're using from the medical services already currently going into running the fire department in two ways. It goes into paying some of the staffing that we have. It also goes into capital equipment for purchasing ambulances. So it's fully pretty much used for that particular purpose now. We are going to engage in that. The problem is that we've had significant budget problems, but I agree with you, public safety is huge. This council has made it very clear to me about that issue, and hopefully we'll have four new firemen shortly. On the side note, in terms of the leaving of some of the qualifier guys going over to other departments, I think that's really sad, and I agree with you to some degree. The council chairman made a big issue of that and brought it to my attention right away. The fire chief had made the decision to only hire paramedics in this round of hiring. As you probably know, we just hired three new guys, and you talked about one of the guys from the Cape, who is giving us every intention that he's moving here. Can't tell when someone will stay forever or leave. I just don't know the answer, Dave. I hope he stays forever, he's a good, young, talented man. The concept that the chief gave me for why we only hired paramedics this round, was trying to get, I believe, two paramedics on every shift. And the guys didn't, some of the guys you were talking about, call guys, didn't have their paramedic license yet, although one was an EMT, and going to school to be a paramedic wouldn't have been long where he could have been, he could have eventually came out as a paramedic. I'm told that now we have the two for a shift, and that the call guys that have an EMT, or firefighter one and firefighter two, will be called up. And we're going to be hiring additional guys shortly, and we'll be looking at the call guys to bring them up. So we are working through that path. I do appreciate your comment, and frankly, agree with a lot of what you said, but our project, biggest problem is finances, trying to get the money in there we need to make it work. I do have a lot of confidence, Deputy Chief, I've had an opportunity to watch the guys on scene. He, as you're probably aware, if you've watched any of the fires, is a guy running the scene where the chief is in the emergency headquarters, kind of dictating the bigger picture. He's been right on the line dealing with firefighters. He seems to have respect of the, not only the local guys who seem to respect him, I know there's some controversy with that, but also the people coming in from the surrounding area. They've come in and worked quite well with our department. You're right, they have a high level of respect. I still believe they do, and we're going to continue to do everything we can to keep that level of respect, just so you know. It's important to all of us to do that, and I commit to you that we're going to keep moving in that direction as strong as we can, okay?
Thank you. And if the second-in-command took that as an attack, trust me, I am not attacking. All I'm saying is, people, please do your due diligence and look at credentials of whoever you bring in here.
Absolutely.
Look at it deeply and stuff like that. This is not personal, he is a wonderful person.
Thank you.
One more comment. Just to answer you, right, and I've said it to council members individually, and I'll say it to you directly, we're going to be hiring a new fire chief shortly. We're trying to move that process as quickly as possible. We will be using a assessment center to make sure that we get the best talent. I don't frankly, you know, I like to hire from inside if I can, but as far as I'm concerned, we're going to hire the best qualified candidate, insider or outside, for the department. So we'll be looking at things like their educational levels, their experience of actually, you know, being a fire chief, all that would be considered. And I've never brought a candidate to this town council that I didn't believe was the best. And I assure you that the fire chief we bring forward will be a high-quality candidate. And I'm going to bring in fire chiefs from outside of town to help me with that interview process, to make sure that not only from a management perspective we're covered, but from a technical fire perspective, we'll have chiefs from outside of the area be involved in that process as well.
Thank you. And just lastly, you know, in the spirit of interest and stuff, because I take ownership, I did put the last chief in his spot. So I, I'm a man, I'll take ownership of that, okay? And just me personally, I apologize for that, okay? But I hold up to my record, you know, you guys will see somewhere along the way here, and ladies, that there'll always be a vote someday that you wish you could take back. And it could be anything, whether it's the end of your career or whatever, you go, "Darn", you know? It is what it is. We're all human. And I want to say thank you again for giving your time to the community, because if you do it right, you're giving a lot of your time. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Landraven. Anyone else push to address counsel?
Good evening. My name's John Poloski, 87, Old Northwood Stock Road. I'm here tonight, I don't know how this works exactly. We have nine appointments relating to citizen members on...
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Can I finish the question before you make the point of order, please?
Their agenda, we'll be voting on them? Is it a question on the process?
I don't want to comment on any of the nine individually.
Just on the process?
As a group, and I have a, I'm not going to mention any names per se. I think this, I really think this is the best way. It's quicker. I want you guys to go through smoothly, get it over with.
Are you addressing the process that we used?
I think that might be a good way of putting it, or let's just say the traditions of what... It's very simple, it's really, we've probably spent as much time discussing...
The debate in it? I'll give you a little bit of latitude.
I appreciate that, Chairman Jovan.
If I consider you out of order, just find that with respect.
Generally speaking, we have nine, I see a trend, a change. I'm concerned about it. Something I like about these citizens being on committees, it's, I've looked at it always, it's like a farm club for people to get a feel for how things are done. There's three of you up there right now, two of the people are just elected. Chairman Daniels, Councilor Daniels and Councilor Adams were both on committees. Mr. Nash, as I recall, you were on committees beforehand, as were some of the others. It's a chance to get your whistle wet, learn how it's done. People in the community become comfortable with you, you've proven yourself. But tonight, there are five of nine that, instead of new people, it's sort of, they're all former, five of the nine are former councilors. So it's becoming very, in my opinion, clicky, where it's not open to people. And not only are five of nine former councilors, we even have a member of the school committee who's going on one of these.
All right, I'm going to stop you right there, Mr. Poloski. I respect your comments, all right? We put it out there for anybody that wishes to come forward for a subcommittee to put their name in. Those are the people that have put their names in, all of them, all the candidates went before subcommittees. So there is a process in place. We only put forward who are the people that are applying for those subcommittees.
Okay.
I'm very ecstatic that on some of these boards, there are multiple candidates. So if you're out there and you want to encourage people to come out and put their names forward, by all means, the more involvement that we can get in the community to better our town, I'm all for it. If they want to come to subcommittee meetings, they want to participate, this is an open government that they're able to participate in. So please, encourage them to come forward, okay?
Okay.
Because we're getting into specific people that are being...
I'm not going to go back and forth with you on it, but some people did show an interest and were told, oh, someone else has already applied. So it discourages people. But that's okay. I just, I liked it before when we used to wait a while. I remember there was, I didn't know the rules when I came back to town a decade ago, when Mr. Tremblay was, Tremblay was put on the Board of Health, people were concerned it wasn't a one-year wait, but that could be because it was a judicial type of committee. And there's something else that I've heard since, like, when Councilor Landriven, just former Councilor Landriven, former Chairman Landriven just came up, I think it adds to, like, no one even thinks about five minutes, and that's good. 10, 20 minutes, if he has something important to say, he should say it. I like that when they kind of come out of retirement, so to speak, and say something because you know it's important, because they're coming back, they're not still like in a never-ending position of council. And it's something that was said tonight, it concerns me, on this marijuana thing. I think, I think some people think that by, that they're somehow helping the drug problem by making retail marijuana sales unlawful in the town. That doesn't close the illegal marijuana dispensaries. I want people to remember that. It doesn't close the dozens, the dozens of crack cocaine and heroin illegal dispensaries that we have in our town. And I'm not being critical of our Police Department, it's not an easy thing. The rules, the courts are not fair, because when they arrest people, they get thrown back in, and even the judges, they don't have enough space in the jails. But it's been proven in at least three states that were states that allowed, let's just say, more liberal, I shouldn't use that word because it's just, more relaxed marijuana retail laws, every one of those states have had reductions in illegal cocaine and illegal heroin. So that's something to take in mind. It looks good politically. Oh, we're going to stop them from selling marijuana, and in the process, you're increasing heroin and cocaine sales. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poloski. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council?
Good evening. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place, Southbridge. Thank you for having me here this evening, allowing this time at Citizens Forum to speak. I was here for one reason only, but there's been a lot of good information tonight that, so I want to make a few points before I talk about my original reason for being here. The previous speaker, former Chairman Landriven, talked about our Fire Department, and that has been something that has come up, obviously, over the years that I've been on council. And he made some very good points. And by the way, 2.4 million approximately is our budget. That's something that people should know, especially our manager. Our Fire Department, our Police Department is higher than that, in the, over 3 million. I'm also very concerned in the process, since it was brought up tonight, as to how we are doing the chief search position. I sat in on the PPP meeting, and I listened to the manager and the former chief, now former chief, discuss this, but I listened to the manager talk about bringing in other Fire Chiefs in session. That's all well and good, we're another week out, I'm curious how far along we are. But what really concerned me is when I was sent the job description, what we've posted here in this community, what the requirements are for our chief, and I would like the community to know. The Town of Southbridge is seeking a full-time Fire Chief. Southbridge Fire Department serves a community of approximately 17,000 residents. We are non-civil service department, also providing paramedic-level ambulance service. The well-qualified candidate should have excellent technical skills, strong management leadership skills, written and oral communication skills, and business administration experience. Candidates must, at a minimum, possess an associate's degree in fire science, business management, or related field required, or an equivalent combination of education and directly relevant experience will be considered. Candidates must have a minimum of 15 years' experience in an organized fire department, with at least five years of said experience in the fire officer capacity. We are requiring an associate's degree for this position. That is unacceptable. Our police chief, it was a bachelor's minimum with a master's preferred. We are also, not only are we seeing an associate's degree, but, or, or related field experience, so maybe not even an associate's degree? A little bit confused. And while it says five years, 15 years of, as a firefighter, that's, that's good, five years in some sort of fire officer capacity, that could be lieutenant, that could be just about anything, that's very vague. This is just an unacceptable job description. And I know when we sat in PPP, the chair was very concerned about the process and the requirements and what we were going to do out there, and we were assured that the manager would take and others would take into consideration some of the concerns and what this town needs. This town needs more than this, and I hope that you guys figure this one out, because as a citizen, as a taxpayer, and with the concerns that former Chairman Landriven mentioned, unacceptable. I'll point out, he brought up some great points last December, when I brought up the fact that we are understaffed, and why weren't we being more proactive? It was, if you can look back in December at that meeting, people didn't even know that. Our manager didn't know that, people didn't know that. We spent months in the process of trying to hire a few people. Just unacceptable. No proactive measures being taken to make sure this town is protected. Unacceptable. So, I'm hoping we do more. We have the opportunity to do more, and we have the opportunity to put a great candidate in place in Southbridge for the future. I plan on staying here. I'd like to be well-protected and have the right person in place. My children are here, you're all here. That's the least this town needs. So, do your job, all councilors, and remember, you confirm the appointment. The process should include you, because you confirm it. And again, Councilor Landriven very accurately noted that we all stand up here at some point and regret votes that we have taken, hindsight being 20/20 and all. I have a few myself, and I do apologize to the people for those couple of votes, one in particular that I made a few years back. Having said that, the real reason I'm here is good stuff. I mentioned before I left that I would like to, along with Councilor Morales, who brought to our attention the small signs at the cemetery, when that whole issue came up at Oak Ridge Cemetery, as to the grave issues, even though we had had on the books for many years rules and regulations, a lot of people were, were not sure in violation, and we have, the DPW and the town has become much more strict, and a lot of people don't realize it. And in walking and passing the Oak Ridge Cemetery, and with Councilor Morales's information too, we have just little posted, copied sheets, laminated, orange, sticking to the wooden sign, and it just did not seem adequate enough to really express to those people who are in mourning, who might walk in and want to decorate their graves, to understand why things are missing within a few days of maybe having done that. So, on that note, got a little proactive and approached the Center of Hope, and as I mentioned, they have produced some signs, which were approved, were actually kind of designed with the help of the DPW to make sure that we weren't going to do something that was not going to be acceptable. And we have those here this evening, both in English and in Spanish, and pretty excited about getting it put up and making a nice addition to the cemetery. So if you will accept, we have two signs. And we have the same version in English. It is the Oak Ridge Decoration Policy, done on special board that, as, street signs and such are done on. The Center of Hope was very knowledgeable of what type of sign. We also had it done with a special coating that makes it reflective, so anybody driving in or with a flashlight or anything in the evening would actually notice this, too. It has the, it has parts of the policy, the very basics, it also has the website where you can find the full policy. It has the number to call, the DPW facility, to understand better if there's a reason that you're not understanding why things have disappeared, or you have no access to the internet, you can certainly call. And it's supported by the Town of Southbridge Department of Public Works, again, as laid out by the Department of Public Works, and proud to be able to present this this evening and in hopes that they will get posted soon. And Councilor Morales, thank you for your assistance and work with me on this, I really do appreciate it.
You as well.
So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for your input tonight, thank you for the signs. Just, just so you know, and from my perspective as Chairman of the Southbridge Town Council, that I, along with my colleagues on the council, have had many discussions about the chief's process, how we're going to move forward, and our goal, along with the Town Manager's goal, is to hire the most qualified person to lead our department, whoever that may be, whether it be someone within the department or outside the department. Our job, we're very clear, I'm very clear on what our rules, our role is as a council, our role is to confirm the appointment of the Town Manager. I think we've made it very clear about what our thoughts are, of what the process should be, on how we will proceed. The Town Manager has been receptive to our thoughts and our processes, and is working with us as we evolve to hire this person. I, too, had concerns. The Town Manager reached right out to me when I expressed those, as to the qualifications as we posted, because they seemed to be in conflict with a prior council recommendation for minimum qualifications. Town Manager responded to me immediately, explained his thought process as to how he wanted to proceed. I agree that education is not the end-all, be-all to hire any leader, it is a factor, a strong factor. However, there are individuals out there that may possess an associate's degree in fire science, that may have been a chief for a long period of time, that may be very well-qualified, so I don't think it's the right tact to say, just because you don't have a bachelor's degree, you may not be qualified, because there are individuals out there that are very talented leaders that could handle the job. So, at a minimum, we require an associate's degree, but I think that as we evolve this process with the Town Manager, we will look at all qualifications, and I do appreciate the fact that the Town Manager has been receptive to our comments, and we will find the best leader for the town. Because I've seen a lot of people that may be book smart and have degrees, but can't handle a fire scene. But there may be that guy that spent 15 years in the Fire Department and busted his butt to work his way up, that is probably the best leader that you could ever have. So, as we go through the Assessment Center, the interview process, the vetting through, with the Town Manager, and the confirmation process, we will hire the best qualified individual to lead our Fire Department. Councilman Mann, do you have a follow-up to that?
Yes, I just want to, thank you, Mr. Chair, express to Council Clements the same as I did to Council Landriven, August 28th, 6:00 PM, please show up, you have some great concerns, and they should be heard, so your presence would be greatly appreciated. And also, thank you for the cemetery signs, and thank you, Councilor Morales. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Southbridge Town Council? Anyone else? One last time. Seeing none, we will move on. Okay. Item nine. We'll see if we can get this accomplished tonight, we'll see, because we have one member not here tonight, so we'll see how this goes. We had vote to appoint the Town Council Vice Chairman. As we know, at the reorganization meeting back in July, we had two candidates that were proposed for nominations. They were Councilors Adams and Councilor Steves. It ended in a 4-4 vote. So this was the continuation vote to vote again, as to, those were the nominations that we have in place. So, I've never been up against this, but according to what I've read in Robert's Rules, we've closed the nominations, those are the two candidates that we have. So at this point, I'm inclined to either call for a roll-call vote and see where it goes. So that's where I'm at right now. So...
So do you need a...
We already had the nominations, they were nominated, we closed those nominations.
So do you need a first motion and a second?
I think it's just a roll-call, I didn't know if anybody else had any other comments or discussion piece. No? Seeing none? Madam Secretary, roll-call?
Councilor Adams.
What's that? Oh, no, I'm sorry. The vote would be who you are voting for. So it's either, for Vice Chairman, so it's either Councilor Steves or Council Adams. So state who you will be voting for for Vice Chair. Okay?
Councilor Adams.
Adams.
Councilor O'Clair.
Adams.
Councilor Daniel.
Adams.
Council Jovan.
Steves.
Council Manna.
Steves.
Council Morales.
Steves.
Council Nash.
Adams.
Council Steves.
Steves.
It's 4-4. Any reconsideration?
Can I...
Councilor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. You know, not, being without a Vice Chair is against charter. Technically, even the first time, we should have continued to vote until it was no longer 4-4.
Correct. You're right, you are correct.
So...
So, does anybody wish to reconsider? I mean, we'll, we'll 4-4 tie until we go with Council DePietro. Is there another vote? Anybody? All right, then I'll hold it off to next week, to August 20th. Item 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Pamela Duke as citizen member to the Planning and Development Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Item 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Sherri Bemis as citizen member to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Council Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since I am a member of the DPW Subcommittee, I'd just like to point out that this candidate was vetted as extensively as we would with any citizen member who had submitted a board and interest form, and the qualifications are quite impressive, so I'm sure that it is with great pleasure the committee sent forth the favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Nash, for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous of all present. Item 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Steven Lazzo as citizen member to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Council Nash, do you have comment on this one?
I'd be happy to comment and reiterate the same thing that I said during the DPW Subcommittee meeting, where citizen member Lazzo was vetted. Very pleased to have him once again brought forth as a candidate, and his vast experience to this, and service to this community is duly noted, very pleased to, at least for myself, promote and support Mr. Lazzo's interest form. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Nash. Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous of all present. Item 13, vote to confirm the appointment of Holly Cristo as a citizen member to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Council Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll skip reading through the meeting minutes, because we had three candidates that were brought forth the night that Ms. Cristo was discussed as a possible citizen member, but she brings quite extensive experience, that experience word I don't like so much, but good history, a good record in involvement within various subcommittees and other areas of involvement in the town that really strengthen and support her candidacy. I know that Councilor Steves made some very nice comments about her involvement with literacy volunteers, she has served on EHS PPP and maybe other committees, as I recall, from the forums that were submitted, so it's with great pleasure, as the Chairman of EHS, I support the nomination of Ms. Cristo. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous of all present. Item 14, vote to confirm the appointment of Scott Lazzo as citizen member to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, or until a new member is appointed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Council Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't think that we need to say a lot about Mr. Scott Lazzo, but during the EHS Subcommittee meeting, discussion was had about his qualifications, his service to the community, and he was indeed supported with a two-to-one vote, with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint to EHS Subcommittee. Glad to bring him forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Item 15, vote to confirm the appointment of Joseph Catrona, citizen member to the Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. On the next two items, actually, I'm just going to go real quick. The next two items, actually, I'm just going to go real quick. I supported Mr. Catrona and Ms. Laporte, both due to their experience, especially Ms. Laporte being a former fire chief, and with all the issues that we have, we're facing. I felt that he had the most experience. And Ms. Catrona has experience with the town charter, and he's very familiar with our bylaws and whatnot, with all the issues that we were facing this year. And I just want to encourage those who put their application in and did not, was not brought up to council, to consider other boards. There's other ways to be involved, too, on other boards. And it's actually, you know, it's quite interesting to learn about the other boards, too, that may have some openings. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Mr. Catrona? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Motion carries. Item 16. Vote to confirm the appointment of Leonard Laporte as citizen member to the Protections of Persons and Property Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion outside of what Councilman said. I'd just like to thank the chief, Laporte, for stepping up to this Subcommittee. I've been trying to get him involved in a few things for the last few years, and he's always barked at it. So it'd be welcome to have his input as we move forward on a couple fronts, not only that, but with the Fire Station Building Committee and other factors that we have. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item 17. Vote to confirm the appointment of Jacqueline Ryan as citizen member to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Council Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This particular appointment and Ms. Clements, the next one down, were both accepted unanimously by the GenGov. They were the only two, the only two people who applied, and I think both of them have shown that they have a lot of experience that are, and the kind of issues that general government really deals with on a regular basis. That's why I'm definitely supporting both of them.
Any further discussion? Council Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Jacqueline Ryan is a very intelligent, motivated, aggressive, and knowledgeable newly-appointed or selected chairperson of the school committee. I look forward to a lot of progress with that particular body moving forward. However, I won't support with my vote tonight Jacqueline Ryan being a member of general government. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I understand your concerns, Council Nash. We don't have anything in our bylaws. That would be something I think maybe we do look at as to, you know, the balance of other committees, but I'm not sure how that would work. But anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just if I may. My concerns aren't necessarily due to being on multiple member bodies in quantity.
Duly noted. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Motion carries. Vote to confirm the appointment of Denise Clements as citizen member to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2019, or until a new member is appointed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Vote to confirm the appointment of Andre Seiko, Seiko?
Seiko.
As a medical doctor, Dr. Seiko, Harrington Healthcare System, to serve as a town physician, physician for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2019. This physician was recommended by Harrington Hospital. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. We had a doctor that was a longstanding representative or doctor for the town itself, but you did a great job. That doctor's retiring. We believe that this doctor will be a great replacement, and will be able to serve the needs of the town for quite, for quite a few years to come.
Did you have a question, Mr. Posky?
Yes. Who's currently a health doctor?
That would be Dr. Lebo.
Okay.
He's retiring. Okay.
My concern, and I don't know if this could be a requirement in the future, is this person... My concern, after being at a recent Board of Health meeting, two or three meetings ago, when I was a boy, everyone was a doctor on the Board of Health. We don't have that anymore. They're asking medical questions, not of a doctor, not of a nurse.
I'm sorry, Mr. Posky, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this position has nothing to do with Board of Health.
But can't we have a town doctor sit on the Board of Health meetings? Because they're asking engineers medical questions.
Okay, so this specifically, I'll handle this, Councilman. So this specific position is for the doctor that does physicals for the town when we appoint people. I think if you have that question, if you would like to discuss that with the town manager another day?
They're also involved if there's a pandemic or some of that nature.
Right. So this is specifically to town physicals, town employees, and that. So if you have another question on?
No, no, just I think there's a great opportunity, maybe in the future, to make it a requirement of the doctors, so that we have some medical know-how on our Board of Health.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And I'm not trying to shut you down, Mr. Posky. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a quick question through you to the manager. It just occurred to me, I don't recall ever seeing us voting to appoint Dr. Lebo as town, as town doctor. If we're appointing him for a one-year term, I'm assuming that that would have had to roll over every year, too. I don't ever remember seeing his name.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, he was here when I came, so I'm not sure, to be honest with you, Councilor Steves, he was here every year that I was here. So I don't know if it was sort of an automatic reappointment or what, but being that we were replacing him, we actually wanted to make sure that the council knew that we were bringing in a new doctor.
Does it have to be a one-year term? Can it be as?
I don't think there's anything against going with a longer term, but frankly, we'd like to see how it works out in the first place, to see that, you know, he is somebody that we like what he's saying in terms of, a lot of the work he's doing is with IOD. So we want to see and have a chance to evaluate him before we decide to go longer. Lebo, I think the other doctor had been here for a long time, and we had a chance to evaluate him. So as being new, I think we want to take a little bit of time.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thanks. Thank you, Council Steve. I think that's duly noted. I think we'll look into that to make sure that we're following the right process as we move forward. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Linda Jawett to the Historical Commission for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2019, to fill a one-year vacancy. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Council Steve.
Yeah, a quick question is here. If we are reappointing her, how can she be filling a vacancy?
I believe that her appointment is expiring, but she is going to the one-year vacancy because there's a potential she'd be maybe moving out of town. So she took the one-year term, according to what Ms. Torres told me.
Okay.
Okay, that's why she went for the one-year.
Okay.
Correct? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Gay Roberts to the Council of Agent for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Vote to approve the transfer of $12,000 from Fire Department salaries account to specialized services account to fund the fire chief assessment center process. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Discussion. Councilman.
This was one of the items on the PPP meeting that we had, and this is just the transfer. I don't see any account numbers on here, though. Any account numbers on here? So are there supposed to be account numbers, or is it okay not to have the account numbers? And I don't see any paperwork in our... But it was just a discuss before the assessment.
We can put the... I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, these are the specific names of the company. Obviously, the town finance director knows the exact account numbers, but these are the name of those two specific accounts. But you're correct, we usually do have the account numbers on there. She didn't add it this time. We'll try to add it for the next meetings.
Okay. Thank you. And we, it was just a discussion of, this was just for the money for the fire chief assessment for the center.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item 23. Vote to declare the Southridge Public Schools 2005 Ford Econel van as surplus. Vehicles not worth investment to repair, and have it scrapped, with said money turned over to the general fund after disposal.
Second.
Discussion. Council Steve.
Yeah, one quick question through you to the manager. Is there, is there any, has any, did anybody look at the idea of keeping this vehicle and the one after it for parts?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. With that in mind, knowing you might have some questions, I did talk to Mike Como today and asked him to talk to Seth and be able to answer any questions to that. So Seth is in the audience. He perhaps can answer the questions. Is there any purpose of keeping this vehicle for the purpose of using it for parts for other vehicles?
Sure. So I will give a first attempt. Thank you, everyone. My name is Seth Racine from the Southridge Public Schools. So these vehicles, their transmissions for these, the next two vehicles are gone. And so we are in the process of trying to replace these vehicles, so they're at least 10, 20 years old. And while we looked at these for parts, I think it was, the best use of our time is to try to invest it in our newer vehicles, and I'm not really sure, both these vehicles have, I think, over 200,000 miles on it. When they were first purchased, they were already used. So there's not a lot of life left, and thinking that we might get more value from just selling it and having the funds returned back to the general fund, than trying to hold on to them and keep up space and still maintain them a little bit for the parts that are remaining.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. For the next two, 23 and 24, there's nothing in our packets to, that gives us even a description. It's just on the agenda. There's no picture of the vehicle. There's nothing. So normally, wouldn't we get that in our packet, Mr. Town Manager?
I'm sorry. What was your question?
Normally, we didn't get anything for Agenda Item Number 23 or 24 in regards to scrapping the 2005 Ford EcoVan or the 1995 Ford F-350. We didn't get anything. We didn't get pictures. We didn't get anything. All we have are the items on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. From the school system, we got just the letters from the receiver as to that they wanted to scrap these, that they were going to be scrapped. We would, if we were going to auction them, we would then ask for pictures of things that we'd be able to put them on our auction site. But since they're being scrapped, there was no need to have pictures of them.
Okay. I mean, but there's no...
There's letters in our packets.
There is letters in our packets?
Yeah, they're in the packet.
This right here?
Yep. They're right here. There's three different letters.
The letters, yeah.
I don't see them, so unless I...
I'd be happy to share mine with you, Councilman, if you'd like to take a look.
There's nothing, there's no letters attached to it.
That's the letter.
There's just this.
Yeah, it's the letter. It should be three of them.
A letter from Mr. Como.
It just, well, okay, but there was no description or anything on it. So usually, I was under the assumption, I mean, because we get that from, you know, it goes through Subcommittee. Maybe that's why I'm confused.
Council Nash, as chair, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just broadly and generally, we did have some questions and concerns about surplus and scrapping through EHS from the school department. And I have corresponded with Dr. Valar about representation during Subcommittee meetings, so these sorts of questions could be answered, and we could have the documentation that we might be requesting. And he did respond that he would be happy to make sure that when we have school-related items on EHS meeting agendas, he would try to participate. I won't, I don't remember every detail of the email, but Councilor Manna raises a fair point, and I know that not too long ago, we had stuff that was being declared surplus for DPW, and we had a very elaborate document. So I can appreciate that. With these being scrapped, I'm not so concerned about pictures of 2005 EcoVan and the 1995. I don't really want to see the 95. But we can absolutely ask the school department to make that concession.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Council Nash. If I could just compare mine to yours, because I didn't get this right here.
So I...
Yeah. So I'm missing 23, 24, and 25, but that's okay. It's okay, so.
If I may, Heather, is the F-350, is that the prior DPW vehicle that was transitioned down, right?
Correct. The F-350 was a vehicle that we determined to be surplus a couple years ago, when we bought the new, three new trucks that we had bought. It's one of the vehicles that the school department said, hey, this is better than what we had.
Oh, okay.
But it is, I can tell you, it's sitting in my parking lot right now. It's not going anywhere except for by a tow truck, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
It has reached its, and surpassed its useful life. I believe that the EcoVan is sitting down at the wastewater treatment plant and has been there for a couple years, where they have been scavenging parts off of it and such. So it really, any parts that could be scavenged at this part, I would say have already been scavenged off. They have down-to-bear, you know, really non-functional vehicles at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, and Seth, this is through you, and I already expressed it to the secretary. During all the Subcommittee meetings, when we have these kind of issues, we have the department head who's requesting that something be destroyed or auctioned or whatever at the meeting, I suggest it to the secretary that, and I also to the chairman of the committee, that if they don't, if the school system doesn't come forward and bring us the information, we're just going to hold items and they won't move forward. So appreciate if you can have Mike Como show up whenever we have something on the agenda, particularly at subcommittee. It's not quite as important to have it at the council. I asked you to be prepared. I talked to Mike Como about having you prepared for this, because I knew that you didn't show up at subcommittee. So we'd appreciate it if we can have whoever the issue is in subcommittee. I know that you and the receiver come all the time, but Mike needs to show up and be able to present the information. So we don't have these questions at council.
Understood. Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor of declaring the 2005? Okay. Item 24, vote to declare the Southbridge Public Schools' 1995 Ford F-350 pickup truck as surplus. Blown transmission had been rebuilt once and have it scrapped with said money being turned over to the general fund after disposal.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item 25, vote to declare the Southbridge Public Schools' two ceramic kilns as surplus and have them auctioned or disposed with said money being turned over to the general fund afterwards. Motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Any comments? No? All those in favor? Seth, thanks for being here and waiting so long. I'm sure it was a long day, but thank you. Item 26, vote to approve the Town of Southbridge to join a class action lawsuit for federal payments in lieu of taxes and authorize the Town Manager to complete and sign the opt-in form. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of give us an update on this, and I appreciate the subcommittee looking at this. This was brought forward by the Collector Treasurer. As you guys all know, the federal government does pay a payment in lieu of taxes for land that it owns in our town. It turns out, as a result of this class action lawsuit and other towns that had concerns, that they were underpaying all the towns in terms of their pilot. They weren't giving us as much as they were supposed to. The towns all got together and formed this class action lawsuit. We have 10 properties that are owned by the federal government in Southbridge. They only paid a pilot of $1,016, so it's not big dollars, but we wanted to join this lawsuit. It doesn't cost us any money at all, but we should get a little bit more money as a result of that pilot plan. So, you know, we scrap for every dollar we can, so we wanted to make sure we added this to the agenda.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Vote to ratify the proposal agreement between the Town of Southbridge and American Alarm and Communications Incorporated in the amount of $15,510.20 for equipment and installation of electronic keyless entry system for the town hall entry doors with an annual fee of $852. That annual fee beginning in FY 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Councilor Steves?
Thank you. That was one of the issues we discussed at some length at GenGov. So I'll summarize the notes here. This came from Will. He said he got two quotes, one for hardware, one for software in the cloud. Most of the costs for the door equipment, which is about $3,000 a door. And he asked the vendor, which in this case is American Alarm, what certain, what certain things did. He found that he needed, that we needed an extra piece from the original quoted price, so that would be about $852 total to do what he wanted. And he requested adding that to the total, which is what brought it to $15,510 and change. We set aside 17 grand in the capital budget last year to do this. All of the doors will get new locks, backup keys with them, with 100 key fobs, which will go to anybody who currently has a key. They're programmed to open and close at set times, and the Town Manager's office can change with the timing. And people with fobs can also override them if necessary under some circumstances. Councilor Man has said that she's concerned about making sure things stay open during long meetings for open meeting law reasons. Will said that he's still working out some of the details. A citizen named Jim Cullers said that his company has used such a system for 10 or 15 years and urged the town to get a hardware maintenance agreement, because it can be hard to get American Alarm to fix issues. His firm said, has had some problems with their battery backup, but it works well for the most part otherwise. Mr. Canoyer said, the system will log all users, the keypads can lock and unlock it. Ron said that he'd used, sorry, that he would include a bell or buzzer system that Denise Clements had requested to alert multiple locations inside the building that someone has stuck outside. The cost doesn't include paying for a locksmith to rekey the doors, however. And that was passed unanimously. And I, have you looked, and if I can ask you a question there, Ron, have you looked into the issue of getting a hardware maintenance agreement? Have you had a chance to do that yet?
Mr. Manager?
Through you. First, I want to thank our assessor for the hard work he's put involved in this, as you know, he's been the lead guy in this, and he's done a tremendous job of getting this information. Before you speak, Will, I'm really happy about this in a lot of ways. One is it, clearly, we've had a lot of changes over the years, and we don't always know who has a key to this building.
Right.
The building, we really want it to be secure. As you know, there's important records in some of the departments. And while those departments have their own special locks and everything, once someone's inside at night, we don't know what could happen. The great thing about this system was to know who comes in and out of this building, particularly some of our department heads work late at night sometimes, and they want that security in the building that, you know, they're aware if somebody tries to enter the building in that situation. So with that, I know Will has been working on your question, so I'm going to let Will address that specific question.
Yeah, your specific question about a maintenance agreement or a service agreement. Myself and the representative for American Alarm, he didn't really feel it's necessary. We have a one-year warranty from the date of the installation, and if anything breaks, they will come out and fix it. So, I mean, he could get us a service agreement if we want to, but he didn't recommend it, and I don't really see the need. They'll fix it if anything breaks.
It's a year.
That's all.
Okay. If I may follow up on that. It seems like if we're going to have something that's going to be in our, in our town hall, basically controlling our town hall security, it seems like a one-year, it seems like a one-year warranty is a little on the light side.
Well, the one-year warranty is the one-year warranty. I don't have any control over that. I don't anticipate any problems. It's a locking device. If it breaks, one of the doors will not unlock, and that'll have to be repaired.
Right.
We have four. I'm not going to get into any details, because I consider these security issues, but basically, the four doors are going to open during the day for normal business hours. And in the evening, the back door that we use here for meetings is going to be the door that's used for the meetings after hour stuff. If there was a problem, we could easily reprogram it to use the opposite door.
True.
Or one of the front doors. As I say, and, you know, I'm going on his recommendation. I don't see the need for it. If we have a problem, we'll pay to fix it.
Any further? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Vote to ratify the license agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Jeff M. Tassi, trustee of Alcoma Realty Trust, for the use of 14 parking spaces according to the conditions listed in the agreement in the amount of $390 per month for a total of $4,860 per year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Manager?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So this is an agreement with our next-door neighbor who owns the parking lot next door. We took a look at all the employees. It turns out, we have more employees than we have parking spots, and it's been clear that we've been using his property for quite some time, free of charge, so to speak. He came over to me to discuss this issue. We actually went out and counted all the employees, counted all the parking spots. It was pretty clear that, he's been very courteous to the town in allowing us to use a lot of his spots. And we know that even with the purchase of these four new spots, it's still less than we use. We want a good relationship. Obviously, we need parking at town hall. We want a good relationship with our next-door neighbor. The minor dollars involved here will provide access to citizens who want to come to meetings and during the day, provide better access for them, and frankly, a little bit better conditions for our employees to park as well. So I think all around, this is a good thing. I appreciate it. It's gone through the general government, and the subcommittee chairs work on this. I think it is a good thing for the town.
Did you have anything else, Councilor?
I'm not really, except the fact that GenGov approved it unanimously.
Unanimous. Okay, anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item 29, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Lead Group Incorporated doing business as Lead Salt for the purchase of treated sodium chloride goat salt at the price of $61.47 per ton in accordance with the cooperative bid dated June 20, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just go on a limb and say that this was vetted at DPW Subcommittee, since Consul DePietro's not here to share any other notes. I don't remember all of the discussion, but I know it was unanimously favored. Thank you.
Ms. Blakely, do you have anything you want to add? Mrs. Blakely?
It's a low price.
Only because it's such good news that I want to share it. This price went down over $10 a ton compared to last year. So I think, you know, we don't ever really see that happening when we use a consumable product like this. Usually, you always see the price go up. So I just want to say that I am very thankful for Oxford, who actually runs this cooperative bid for us, and we've been very happy with the company. This is the second year that they're coming back, so, and it's nice to see a price go down.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item 30, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Wooded and Curran for Professional Engineering Services for SCADA Cyber Security Assessment in the amount of $25,700 to be funded from the Water Technical Services Budget. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Manager?
Just a brief comment. I want to thank Heather and the people from our water company for putting this together. Obviously, we need to make sure that our cyber systems are, computer systems are secure from anyone tampering with our water company. It's a vital resource to the community. This is what does this. This looks at the complete threat, a potential threat to our system, ensures that our system is in fact protected.
Any further discussion? I, for one, that was an eye-opener when we went to that meeting to think about the possibilities of that water resource. Former Councilor Landman talked about our resource that we have for water. We need to protect it. This is, I think, is just the first step, so I'm sure there's going to be other additional work being done. But I'm grateful that we're being proactive in this time. So thank you for that, bringing it forward. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Vote to approve the adjustment of capital funds for recreation areas, parks and fields, project number 6452 by designating $4,062 for replacement of street-side fencing instead of $3,000 for repairs for batting cage and $1,062 from repairs to infield service. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilor Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Because this money was already appropriated, shouldn't it say vote to reappropriate capital funds?
Yeah, okay, yep.
Should we make that amendment and not adjustment?
So it's reappropriation of capital funds?
Yeah.
So, any further discussion? Councilor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I will state that that was actually discussed during the subcommittee meeting when this item was on the agenda on August 6th. And the committee, by its motion and second, decided that they would not take the recommendation to reappropriate and leave it the way that it was worded to approve. I also wanted to just read a little bit of the meeting minutes, since I haven't done that tonight on this particular item, because it was a very extensive discussion. If you'll indulge?
Thank you, Councilor Nash.
Thank you. So tonight's agenda item number 31 was Agenda Item 6 on our August 6th meeting agenda. And I took the minutes and, as I try to do, I try to summarize what was done, not necessarily everything that was said. And I read, quote, from our draft minutes. Adjustment of capital funds, blah, 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 there's the agenda item. Councilor Nash asked for an account from the Town Manager and Rec Director before the committee would entertain any motions offering that this matter had been initially taken up at EHS on 6/20/2018 with no resolution after that discussion and questions remaining. The Town Manager and Rec Director explained the circumstances and intentions to repurpose funds to replace fencing at West Street School Field. Citizen Clements and Citizen Smick mentioned concerns with and legality of the process since work had already been started without council authorization. References to the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, Chapter 10, were given legal opinion. Memo and Town Department memos were made, as well as references to the DPW Subcommittee meeting in March, which involved lengthy discussion about a forklift and procurement procedures. Councilor Adams moved to recommend that council approve the adjustment of capital funds for recreation areas, parks, and field project number 6452 by designating $4,062 for replacement of street-side fencing instead of $3,000 for repairs to batting cage and $1,062 for repairs to the infield surface. Second, by Councilor Daniel, motion passed favorably three to zero. And I stand behind the committee's decision to leave the wording as approved. Thank you.
Any further discussion? So just, I apologize, because I was unable to make that meeting due to a wake funeral I had to go to. Just from my understanding, so, and I wasn't on council when this first came forward. So when we appropriate capital funds, there was a specific line item for Recreation Parks and Fields Project, is that correct? And what was the total for that project?
The project, I think it was about 36 grand, Steve, the total dollar amount? Let me explain the process, we'll get the exact amount. So, so a variety of money, whatever it was, we'll get the exact number, was put aside to do a whole variety of different repairs of our fields, to try to improve our fields. In this particular case, a thousand, you know, we, the head of the Recreation Department put various types of repairs he was looking at doing, and he put dollar amounts next to each of them. So for the fencing, he put $1,000. For the batting cage, he put $3,000. The fixing infield, he put dollars. And he listed out a whole bunch of concepts for what he was going to do. He believed, and frankly, at the time, I believed that you could move money within that account for those items, because we all know that they were kind of estimates and guesses. As it turned out, an issue was raised about the legality of that. We immediately stopped the work. We came back to the Subcommittee to have the Subcommittee transfer the money from the batting cages in the field to purposes of redoing the fence. So it was a larger allocation. And Steve, can you just give me the total dollar it was for that? It came out of free cash. I forget, I think it was like $27,000, but...
Thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand? So the total was $36,000 to the whole wide range of repairs.
So would, let me, I guess, my question, within that capital funds project, were there specific account subsections for that, or was it just, this was the list?
Just the list, yeah. There was no accounts, it was just one list. Everything came under the same account, repairs to fields. And it's been a legal question if you could do transfers within that account or not. And I think that's still somewhat subject to debate, but the legal memo that we got is not exactly clear on that type of issue. It was clear on the forklift issue you raised, but this issue's still a little unclear.
Okay. All right. So we're not changing the appropriation for that line item?
Not for the total amount, no.
Use, and we're voting to it. Okay. I understand that. Any further discussion? Councilor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did take the comments that were made at Subcommittee seriously, and I did a little bit more homework, and I'll stipulate that the approved item was at $36,000, where it originally had been around $43,000, because it included originally a request for $7,000 and change for the Charlton Street ice rink, which I don't think has ever been an ice rink. That part was removed and subsequently made $36,000, where it did account for the fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Standing. Councilor Steves, standing. Okay. All right. Vote to accept the Green Communities grant in the amount of $206,130 and ratify the contract with the State Department of Energy Resources in the amount of $206,130 to fund the town hall natural gas conversion, new boiler installation, and wireless pneumatic zone controls. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Second was Councilor Daniel, second. Discussion. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, I want to, again, I want to show the appreciation to department heads who do so much work on these issues, and there's two department heads in particular deserve a lot of credit. One is Rosemary Scrivens, our DPW, Economic Development Director, and Heather Blakely, our DPW Director, who have been working together on this. This is a final approval of a Green Communities grant, over $200,000. This was a result of Rosemary applying for that grant, working forward with every department that are here to come up with energy savings from each of the various departments in the town. Heather is taking the lead in particular, working on, since she's in charge of the DPW building facility, and looking at the energy savings here as a result to the furnaces downstairs. Currently, we're on oil and we're converting them to natural gas, and also the controls are all going to be replaced. This is going to not only improve and save money in terms of cost, it's also going to improve, as all of us know, the heating in this building is a little bit odd in terms of how hot it gets, and it really is uncomfortable often. I think this will go a long way to improve that for all the employees as well. So that's the overall project. Mostly, what we're doing tonight is voting to approve the contract that's given to the state to accept the actual grant dollars.
Any further discussion? Councilor Steves?
This is through you, too, the Town Manager, but first, I just wanted to make a comment that during the part, I know during the part of that discussion, we were talking about where this particular project is like $180,000, and that, so there's going to be about 25 or so thousand left over. And I know that, and I know that former Councilor Clements brought up the idea of trying to look at, maybe using some of that extra funding to look at evaluating the windows. I think that would be a great idea, frankly.
So we actually had...
These windows are in horrible shape.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So we actually had some money in an account to do windows in town hall.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And this was brought forward to a past council discussion, Subcommittee. We found out that the windows were significantly more expensive than we had thought, because they have to be historical in nature. The costs, frankly, were, only described as outrageous to me as to how much it would cost. So we don't have enough money, and this minor difference of money isn't going to do anything for the windows here. Now, we're going to have to make a serious decision if it wants to fund the money to actually replace those windows. We'd have to look, I think there's still some money in that account, Councilor Steves, so we'd have to look at what's in the account, get a real cost estimate of how to, how to replace those window in a historical manner. And I don't know if that means every window or just certain windows. So we have to have that evaluation done to find out what the cost of that is, and we have not had that done as of yet.
Well, that's what I was thinking. That's what I thought she was bringing up, was the idea of using that money to do the evaluation.[1506.00] Obviously, it's not going to replace the windows. I mean, that money probably wouldn't even replace that window over there, but...
Yeah. You know, the problem is, and this goes to the roof issue as well, that, you know, some things you can go out and people will come and give you estimates for, because it's not big work, and they're trying to get the work that is going to be done, and windows, like the windows and the roof, the cost of doing the actual evaluation and giving you a quote is so high that you have to pay for it. And then this is one of the conditions, I think, if we actually brought in, I don't know if it's an engineer or whoever to look at the windows, what that would cost us, but it's something I think that some of the members of the town council would like to expend a few dollars to find out what that, what that real cost is, I think, right?
Yeah.
Your real problem is that $200,000 for Green Communities can only be used on projects that are going to show you energy savings. So an evaluation doesn't, you can't use that to do the evaluation.
Ah, okay.
Preliminary evaluations already of the windows indicate, although we all insularly think, oh my goodness, they're so leaky, they actually don't save you enough to show you enough energy savings by replacing the windows. They've already done those studies on a bigger basis. Amazingly so. That's from the energy people. That's not from me, so...
Okay.
We can, but you couldn't use the grant money to do that. You have to do, use the grant money to do an actual project.
Okay. Would it be possible in the future to apply for a future round of Green Communities grant money to do that?
Yes, if we can show, you have to show the energy savings. It has to be at a certain percentage savings to qualify.
Oh, okay.
So if, if we would get 1% energy savings by doing the windows, it wouldn't qualify for grant. The grant requires a limit, a base, like baseline of 6% or 7% energy savings.
Okay.
It comes with, you have to show that you're going to make a significant impact in your energy, reduction of your energy.
Okay. Thank you.
But there's other buildings that we can look at. We already started looking at the school buildings. We've already started looking at the community center. There's other very inefficient energy buildings that we own, so we will be able to apply for grants for other buildings as we go in this process.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, so through you, Council Steve, just one more comment I wanted to make. Not only is it on the fact that it saves energy, but it is on the payback period, right?
Yeah, I get that.
So, so as you remember when we did all the lighting in the different buildings, they had certain paybacks for different buildings? That's also in the evaluation. So the windows may not have a quick enough return on investment either that makes it worthwhile compared to other projects. So as they're doing that energy evaluation, that payback period is considered in the evaluation, and projects are picked by the best, the quickest and best return on investment, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? The interim small present. Excuse me. Vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Graphics Unlimited LLC for the fabrication and installation of proposed community wayfinding signs in the amount of $30,888 to be funded from project number 6471 capital budget FY '18, town branded and signage for 17,500, and the balance funded from the FY 2017 CDBG grant.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Rosemary, did you have anything you wanted to add, or you're good? You're good? All right. Very good. Any, Council Adams?
Mr. Chair, this is one of our agenda items from PND. It was unanimously voted on, three, nothing. This is a project that's been about a year and a half in the making, based on recommendations and how they support it. This is moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Adams. Any further discussion? All those in favor? The interim small present. Thank you for your hard work, Rosemary, on that. Appreciate it. Okay. Does anybody need a break before we get into these readings? Everybody good? All right. Do you need one, Councilman?
No, I'm just going to get water after we get the next agenda item taken care of.
Okay. We now have two items that hopefully someday we can resolve, how we're going to do this in the future, but for now, the third and final reading of proposed bylaw as entaxed and read to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in the Town of Southbridge. The first reading being June 25, 2018. The second reading being July 16, 18. Today is the third and final reading of this proposed bylaw, August 13, 2018. Council Man, would you like to start?
I sure will, yeah.
All right. I feel like a teacher up here going, okay, Miss Man, Council Manager, your turn.
That's okay. I like being a student, so it's all good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, a bylaw to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in the Town of Southbridge. Whereas, the Town of Southbridge believes that the town should adopt a bylaw to authorize and guide the use of departmental revolving funds pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, and whereas, the Town of Southbridge believes it is in the best interest of the citizens of the Town of Southbridge to adopt and formalize the use of town funds for town purposes, and whereas, the Town of Southbridge believes that the adoption of this proposed bylaw will be best achieve, bylaw will best achieve these purposes. Now therefore, the Town of Southbridge, acting by and through the Town Council pursuant to the power vested in it by Chapter 2, Section 4-1, and Chapter 2, Section 6 of the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, parentheses, quotation marks, charter, hereby takes the following action. Upon motion made, seconded, and duly passed, the Town Council of the Town of Southbridge in the exercise of power conferred, on it by Section 8 of Article, Gus, help me out.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Oh, thank you, Council Nash, and Council Steve. On it by Section 8 of Article 89 of the Amendments to the State Constitution and by its Home Rule Charter, does hereby adopt and enact the following addition to the Code of Bylaws, Town of Southbridge Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be indexed as Chapter 11, Section 100 through Section 500.6.5, and to be known as departmental revolving funds, and which is set out in its entirety as follows. Chapter 11, Departmental Revolving Funds. Section 11-100, Purpose. This bylaw establishes and authorizes revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in connection with the operations of programs or activities that generate fees, charges, or other receipts to support all or some of the expenses of those programs or activities. These revolving funds are established under the governed by, are established under and governed by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half. Section 11-200, Expenditure Limitations. A department or agency head, board, committee, or officer may incur liabilities against and spend monies from a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw without appropriations subject to the following limitations. A, fringe benefits of full-time employees whose salaries or wages are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund, except for those employed as school bus drivers. B, no liability shall be incurred in excess of the available balance of the fund. C, the total amount spent during the fiscal year shall not exceed the amount authorized by Town Council on or before July 1 of that fiscal year, or any increased amount of that authorization that is later approved during that fiscal year by the Town Council. Section 11-300, Interest. Interest earned on monies credited to a revolving fund established by this bylaw shall be credited to the general fund. Section 11-400, Procedures and Reports. Except as provided in General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, and in this bylaw, the law's charter provisions, bylaws, ordinances, rules, regulations, policies, or procedures that govern the receipt and custody of town monies and the expenditure and payment of the town funds shall apply to the use of a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw. The town accountant shall include a statement of the collections credited to each fund. The encumbrances and expenditures charged to the fund and the balance available for the expenditure and the regular report the town accountant provides the department, board, committee, agency, or officer on appropriations made for its use. Want me to continue?
Council Nash, we have another reading, so we'll all take turns tonight.
Okay.
Section 11-500, Authorized Revolving Funds. Section 11-500.1, Lease Properties Revolving Fund. Section 11-500.1.1, Fund Name. There shall be a separate fund called the Leased Properties Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Community Services Department. Section 11-500.1.2, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Leased Properties Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the lease and other revenue charged and received by the Community Services Department in connection with the lease of town-owned properties except for the airport. Section 11-500.1.3, Purpose and Expenditures. During each fiscal year, the Community Services Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Leased Properties Revolving Fund for repairs, improvements, utilities, and other expenses for all town-owned properties except for the airport. Section 11-500.1.4, Other Requirements/Reports, None. Section 11-500.1.5, Fiscal Years. The Leased Properties Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, or July 1, 2018. Section 11-500.2, Southbridge Airport Leased Properties Revolving Fund. Section 11-500.2.1, Fund Name. There shall be a separate fund called the Southbridge Airport Leased Properties Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Airport Commission. Section 11-500.2.2, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Southbridge Airport Leased Properties Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the lease and other revenue charged and received by the Airport Commission in connection with the airport. Section 11-500.2.3, Purpose and Expenditures. During each fiscal year, the Airport Commission may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Southbridge Airport Leased Revolving Fund for repairs, improvements, utilities, and other expenses in connection with the airport. Section 11-500.2.4, Other Requirements/Reports, None. Section 11-500.2.5, Fiscal Years. The Leased Properties Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2018. Section 11-500.3, Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund. Section 11-500.3.1, Fund Name. There shall be a separate fund called the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Health Department. Section 11-500.3.2, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the fees from lost toters received by the Health Department in connection with the Toter program. Section 11-500.3.3, Purpose and Expenditures. During each fiscal year, the Health Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund for replacement of toters in connection with the Toter program. Section 11-500.3.4, Other Requirements/Reports, None. Section 11-500.3.5, Fiscal Years. The Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2018.
Council Morales, may I continue?
Sure. Section 11-500.4, Demolition of Building Revolving Funds. Section 11-500.4.1, Fund Name. There shall be a separate fund called the Demolition of the Building Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Health Department. Section 11-500.4.2, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the demolition of the building revolving funds as a separate account and credit to fund all of the revenue recaptured by their Health Department in connection with the demolition of the building program. Section 11-500.4.3, Purpose and Expenditures. During each fiscal year, the Health Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the demolition of the building revolving fund for expenses associated with the demolition of the building. Section 11-500.4.4, Other Requirements/Reports, None. Section 11-500.4.5, Fiscal Years. The demolition of the building revolving fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on, on or after July 1 of 2018. Section 11-500.5, Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Funds. Section 11-500.5.1, Fund Name. There shall be a separate fund called the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund authorized for, for use by the Town Manager. Section 11-500.5.2, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund of all of the revenue from fines in violations of Mass General Law, Chapter 148A, and Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2009, received in connection with the program. Section 11-500.5.3, Purpose and Expenditures. During each fiscal year, the Town Manager may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Funds for expenses associated with the administration and collection of fines in violation of Mass General Law, Chapter 148A, Chapter and Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2009. Section 11-500.5.4, Other Requirements/Reports, None. Section 11-500.5.5, Fiscal Years. The demolition of the building, buildings revolving fund shall operate for the fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2018. Section 11-500.6, Southbridge Middle/High School Store Revolving Fund. Section 11-500.6.1, Fund Name. There shall be a separate fund called the Southbridge Middle/High School Store Revolving Fund authorized for use by the school business manager. Section 11-500.6.2, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Southbridge Middle/High School Store Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the, to the fund of, fund all of the sales and other revenues received by the school business manager in connections with the school store program. Section 11-500.6.3, Purpose and Expenditures. During each fiscal year, the school business manager may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Southbridge Middle/High School Revolving Store Revolving Fund for expenses associated with the school store operations. Section 11-500.6.4, Other Requirements/Reports, None. Section 11-500.6.5, Fiscal Year, Fiscal Years. The Southbridge Middle/High School Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2018.
Thank you. These provision, the provisions of these sections are effective immediately upon affirmative vote of the Town Council. All bylaws or parts of bylaws inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. They'll be dated. So that is the third reading. I don't believe we've had any comments or any other activity. All readings have been made. Any questions? Council Steve?
Yeah, actually, while, while Council Morales was reading, and I caught this, take a look at the text of Section 11-500.5.5.
Mm-hmm.
That text, it was taken directly from the section above it. It should read Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund Shall Operate?
Municipal what?
It should say the Municipal Hearing Officer Revolving Fund Shall Operate, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, the, instead of demolition of buildings revolving fund.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That is, yeah, so that would have to be corrected, so. Thank you, Council Steve, for picking that up.
Nevermind.
Third time through, and we didn't even pick that up, because this is just a copy of it, so.
Yep.
Good pickup on that one. So you have that, Mr. Manager?
I will check in with you later when I get that.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for reading.
I saved you, Council Daniels, for the zoning one, so. I mean, Council Adams.
You guys do stop. He's a lot like my dad.
Okay. Item 35. Vote to accept the proposed bylaws as we've just read, and made sure we made the correct corrections.
Yes.
To establish and authorize revolving funds for the use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in the Town of Southbridge.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. First time doing a bylaw, does this require roll call, or is this a general hand vote for this? I would say this is a roll call vote. So Madam Chair, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Council O'Clare?
Yeah.
Council O'Clare?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Joe Van?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Morales?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you for reading. Okay. The next one. This will be the proposed amendment to the Southbridge Zoning Bylaws, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. This is amendments to the Southbridge Zoning Bylaw introducing a new definition in Article 3, Definitions, Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, parentheses, RMD. Section 300.541, Subsection A, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, parentheses, RMMCC, parentheses. Section 300.541B, Registered Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, add in Article 5, Section 502.35, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMCC, and allowing such use with a special permit in single-family residential retail business, general business, light industrial, heavy industrial, zoning districts, business opportunity districts, and the central core, and add, and add in Article 5, Section 502.36, Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, allowing such use with special permit in retail business, general business, light industrial, heavy industrial, zoning districts, business opportunity districts, and the central core, and add in Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. And Council Adams, you can start with the definitions on that. So that is the introduction to the bylaw, and this, we will continue with the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proposed Amendment to Southbridge Zoning...
No, you just have to start definitions, Section 3. I, I read it first, so that we don't have to reread it on the reading, okay?
Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, an entity registered and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in accordance with 105 CMR 725.100, to be known hereafter as a RMD that acquires, cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana products containing marijuana-related supplies or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers to be conducted entirely within a secure facility with no drive-through services. Unless otherwise specified, an RMD refers to the site or sites of dispensing, cultivation, distribution, and preparation of marijuana for the purposes of the bylaw, RMDs shall be referred to as Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, and Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, or RMMCC. Section 300.541 Alpha, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, or RMMCC, an entity registered and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in accordance with 105 CMR 725.100, to be known as a Registered Marijuana Dispensary, or RMD, that cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfers, transports, sells, or distributes marijuana products containing marijuana and related supplies to a qualified Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary, or RMMDC. Sections 300.541 Bravo, Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary, RMMDC, an entity registered and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in accordance with 105 CMR 725.100, to be known as a Registered Marijuana Dispensary, or RMD, that acquires, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, tinctures, aerosol, oils, or ointments, sells, dispenses, or administers marijuana products containing marijuana, related supplies, or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers unless otherwise specified. RMMDC refers to the site or sites of dispensing and preparation of marijuana. Add Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. Section 1901, Purpose. It is the purpose and intent of this, of this section of the zoning bylaw to provide for the limited establishment of registered marijuana dispensaries known hereafter as RMD as they are authorized by the Humanitarian Medical Use of Marijuana Act, Massachusetts General Law, Laws, Chapter, Chapter 94, Charlie, and states' regulations adopted by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, under 105 CMR 72.0, I'm sorry, 725.000, the implementation of an act for the humanitarian medical use of marijuana in locations suitable for lawful RMDs to minimize any adverse impacts adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, playgrounds, and other areas where children commonly congregate, local historical, I'm sorry, local historic districts, and other areas that are incompatible with such sorry, local historic districts, and other areas that are incompatible with such uses, and for the location of RMDs where they may be readily monitored by law enforcement for health and public safety purposes. It is neither the purpose nor the intent of this section of the bylaw to supersede any federal or state laws governing the sale or distribution of narcotic drugs. Section 1902, Applicability Say that word. This section applies to registered marijuana dispensaries, RMD, to be constructed after the effective date of this section. The commercial cultivation, production, processing, assembly, packaging, retail, or wholesale sale, trade, distribution, or dispensing of marijuana for medical use is prohibited unless permitted or established as an RMD under this Section 19. An RMD may be permitted upon application to and the granting of special permit, the site plan approval by the planning board, acting as the special permit granting authority as specified in Section 701.1 of Southbridge zoning bylaws. Sections 1902.1, Definition The following definition has been added to Article 3 of the Southbridge zoning bylaws, Registered Marijuana Dispensary. Changes and additions to Article 5 have been included to identify Registered Marijuana Dispensary as a use. Where not expressly defined in the zoning bylaws, terms used in this section shall be interpreted as defining the humanitarian medical use of Marijuana Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94 Charlie, and the Department of Public Health Regulations Promulgated thereunder 105 CMR 725.000. Section 1903, Requirements for All Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. Sections 1903.1, Application Requirements No RMD shall commence operations without first applying for and receiving site plan approval and the grant of a special permit from the planning board, acting as the special permit granting authority. A special permit shall be granted provided that the planning board finds that the applicant has complied with all the terms, requirements, conditions, and procedures, Section 701.1 of the Southbridge zoning bylaw. In addition to the requirements of this section, site plan approval shall be granted provided that the planning board finds that the applicant has complied with all the terms, requirements, conditions, and procedures of Sections 701A and 705 of the Southbridge zoning bylaw. In addition to the requirements of this section, the commercial cultivation unless it meets the requirements for an agricultural, horticultural exemptions under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40 Alpha, Section 3, or as a hardship cultivation as allowed by state or regulation. Production, processing, assembly, packaging, retail, or wholesale, sale, trade, distribution, or dispensing of marijuana for medical use is prohibited unless permitted as a RMD under this section.
You all set, Councilor Adams, or you want to continue?
Whatever you need, Chair.
Huh?
Whatever you need.
It's up to you.
I'll go again.
You're a Marine, so you can power right.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Not big words, though. All right. In addition to the materials required under Sections 701 and 701 Alpha.15, the applicant shall include: A. A copy of the certificate of registration to operate an RMD issued by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. B. A proposed timeline for achieving operation of the RMD and evidence that the applicant will be ready to operate within the proposed timeline. C. A statement indicating the need for a RMD in the town of Southbridge and the projected service area, including the current patient population amounts in that service area. D. Evidence that the applicant has adequate liability insurance. E. A copy of the detailed written operating procedures as required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in 105 CMR 725.105, or its successor regulation, and as otherwise required by other applicable law or regulation. F. Locations of all other RMDs in the Worcester County. G. A copy of the policies and procedures for the patients or personal caregiver home delivery required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for RMD. H. A copy of the policies and procedures for the transfer, acquisition, or sale of marijuana between the RMD and another independent testing laboratory as required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. I. A copy of the policies and procedures for patients or personal caregiver home delivery required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for RMD. J. A copy of the proposed waste disposal procedures. K. Description and list of any waivers granted by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the RMD. L. Details of proposed water usage and wastewater plans for any site that will include cultivation. M. Evidence of the applicant's right to use the proposed site of the RMD facility such as a deed, lease, or other real estate instrument. Additionally, if a cultivation facility, evidence of contract or agreement to grow marijuana for a certified dispensary. N. If the applicant is a business organization, a statement under oath disclosing all of its owners, shareholders, partners, members, managers, directors, officers, or other similarly situated individuals and entities, and their addresses. If any of these above entities are business organizations rather than individuals, the applicant must disclose the identity of the owners of such entities or business organizations for each level of ownership until the disclosure contains the names of all individuals and their addresses. O. A detailed floor plan of the premises of the proposed RMD that identifies the square footage available and describes the functional areas of the RMD, including area for any preparation of marijuana-infused products or open-air cultivation. P. A description and security measures, I'm sorry, description of the security measures, including employee security policies required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the RMD. Q. Proposed security measures for the RMD, including lighting, fencing, storage, gates, and alarms to ensure the safety of persons to protect the premises from theft. R. Detailed site plans that include all the information required under Sections 701 Alpha of the Southbridge zoning bylaw, including distances to any of the uses identified in Sections 1903.2 below. The planning board shall refer copies of the application to the Department of Inspection Services, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, and any other board, if warranted, to receive written comments related to the community and environmental impact, public safety, traffic, municipal facilities and services, water supply, utility infrastructure, and wastewater. Sections 1903.2, Site Restrictions. You want to do this?
Go ahead, Councilor Steve. We'll give you a break.
Section 1903.2, Site Restrictions. A. An RMD facility shall not be located within 500 feet of the following, or 250 feet if located in the central core, as measured in a straight line from the building and/or area actively used. 1. Public or private preschool, primary or secondary school, dancer, gymnastics school, martial arts school, licensed daycare center, or any other facility where children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis, under 105 CMR 725.110A14. Or 2. A public library. Or 3. A playground, athletic field, or any other recreational areas where children commonly congregate under CMR 725.110A14 that are not contained within the building. B. No RMMCC is to be located within 1100 feet of any abutting occupied residence in a residential zoning district as measured in a straight line from existing structure to proposed development. 2. 250 feet of any non-conforming residential structures in a non-residential districts as measured in a straight line from existing structure to the proposed development. C. No RMMDC is to be located within 250 feet of any residential zoning district, residential structure, or any non-conforming residential structures in non-residential districts. Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the residential zone boundary line or from existing structure to the proposed development. D. No marijuana or marijuana-based products shall be sold, or grown, or cultivated in motels, dormitories, motels and dormitories, or inside a mobile structure such as a cargo container, motor vehicle, or similar non-permanent enclosure. E. No RMDs shall have drive-through services. F. No smoking, burning, or consumption of any product containing marijuana or marijuana-related products shall be permitted on the premises. G. Exterior signs shall identify only the name of the RMD, but shall not display advertisements for marijuana or any brand name, nor shall marijuana-infused products or associated products be displayed or clearly visible to a person from the exterior of the RMD. All exterior building openings, entries, and windows shall be screened in such a manner as to prevent the public's view of the interior from any public or private way or from any abutting property. H. Hours of operation for any RMD shall be established by the planning board, but in no event shall said facilities be open and/or operating between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM, including delivery services. I. If cultivation facility, a six-foot fence or screening with security tops should be erected.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Will we please ask for the conversation at the back of the room to cease? It's very distracting. It may not be loud, but I can't seem to follow with the conversation being held in the back.
Okay. Okay, if anybody's conversing, keep it low, or take it to the corner over there, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Section 1903.3, Location Waiver. The distance requirements may be reduced at the discretion of the planning board through the special permit application if the applicant demonstrates that the marijuana establishment will employ adequate security measures to prevent diversion of marijuana to minors. Section 1903.4, Conditions The planning board, as special permit granting authority, shall attach the following conditions to all RMD special permits, including but not limited to applicable site-specific conditions as determined by the board in accordance with Section 701.1 of this bylaw, in addition to 105 CMR 725. A. The special permit shall remain exclusively with the applicant, who shall also be known as permit holder after the granting of the special permit, who shall be the owner or lessie of the premises described in the application as the site for the proposed RMD, and shall terminate automatically on the date there is a voluntary or involuntary separation of the applicant's title or leasehold interest in the premises or the applicant's right to occupy the premises terminates for any reason. B. Each RMD permitted under the zoning bylaw shall, as a condition of its special permit, file an annual report to the planning board and the town clerk, and providing a copy of all current applicable state licenses and registrations for the RMD and/or its owners, any updated operating policies required under 105 CMR 725.105, or by the Department of Public Health, the current insurance policies for the RMD, and demonstrated compliance with the conditions of the special permit. C. The permit holder shall file a copy of any incident report required under 105 CMR 725.110F with the inspector of buildings, police chief, and the planning board within 24 hours of creation by the RMD. Such reports may be redacted as necessary to comply with any applicable state or federal laws and regulations. D. The permit holder shall file a copy of any deficiency statement, plan of correction, summary cease-and-desist order, quarantine order, summary suspension order, order limiting sales, notice of a hearing, or final action issued by DPH or the Division of Administrative Law Appeals, as applicable, regarding the RMD with the Department of Inspection Services, Police Department, and Planning Board within 48 hours of receipt by the RMD. The permit holder shall provide to the Department of Inspection Services and Police Department the name, telephone number, and electronic mail address of a contact person in the event that such person needs to be contacted after regular business hours to address an urgent issue. Such contact information shall be kept updated by the permit holder. F. The special permit shall lapse upon the expiration or termination of the applicant's registration by DPH. G. The permit holder shall notify the Department of Inspection Services and Police Department and the planning board in writing within 48 hours of the cessation of the operation of the RMD, or the expiration or termination of the permit holder's registration with DPH. H. The legal entity and structure of the applicant permit holder shall not change as represented in compliance with Section 1903.1N. Would you care to take over?
I was actually going to ask to respectfully pass, because I'm just, like, coming down with a little cold. So you can keep going.
Councilor Steve, if you don't mind just finishing, I think this is it, just one more paragraph, and I'll save you for next week.
Section 1903.5, Abandonment or Discontinuance of Use. A. Special permit granted under this section is non-transferable and shall have a term limited to the duration of the applicant's ownership or leasing of the premises as an RMD, dependent on the applicant's continued existence as the same legal entity. Any violation of Section 1903.4H shall be considered a transfer for purposes of this bylaw. B. An RMD shall be required to remove all material, plants, equipment, and other paraphernalia in compliance with 105 CMR 725.105J and O prior to surrendering state-issued licenses or permits, or within six months of ceasing operations, whichever comes first. Section 1905, Severability All other applicable portions of the Southbridge zoning bylaw shall also apply to this section. If any section or portion of this bylaw is ruled invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such ruling will not affect the validity of the remainder of this bylaw. We also amend Section 502, Table of Use Regulations, to add Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center, RMMC, and allow in single-family residential, retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry zoning districts, business opportunity district, and the central core with a special permit, under Section 502.35, and adds Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, and allow in retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry zoning districts, business opportunity district, and the central core with a special permit, under Section 502.36, and it includes a chart stating those specific things.
Okay. Any questions? So this is the first reading of this bylaw. The second reading will be August 20th.
Mr. Chairman, just want to point out that at the last conversation we had on zoning, we did actually read the table of use.
Okay.
So I'd like to have that, just for clarity.
Okay, so table of use regulations, 502.3, other institutional uses in the table, single-family, two-family, multifamily?
I just stayed.
What's that?
RB, is that retail business?
Retail business? General business?
It's all above.
Light industry? Oh, yeah, heavy industry. So 502.35, Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Centers, and a single-family would be under special permit. Two-family, no. Multifamily, no. Retail business would be special permit. General business would be special permit. Light industry would be the special permit. Heavy industry zoning districts would be special permit. Business opportunity district, special permit, and the central core would be a special permit. Under 502.36, the Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, RMMDC, single-family would not be allowed, a two-family would not be allowed, a multifamily would not be allowed, retail business would be a special permit, general business would be a special permit, light industry would be a special permit, heavy industry zoning districts, special permit, business opportunity district, special permit, and central core, special permit. So anything that anybody wants to do with medical marijuana would be under special permits in the town of Southbridge. Mr. Manager?
If I could, through you, Mr. Chairman, a question that Ken told me, please. Ken, I'm just trying to understand the definitions in Section 3. So you have the RMD, you have RMMCC, and then the RMMDC, and defines what those are. But what I'm a little confused is the last line of, let's say, the first definition, the RMD. At the end, it's a little confusing. It says, unless otherwise specified, an RMD refers to the site of dispensing, cultivation, distribution, and preparation of marijuana, right? So I get that. But then it says, for the purpose of this bylaw, RMD shall be referred to as the Registered Medical Marijuana Distribution Center, RMMDC, in Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation. Are they, in each of these sections, they just keep dividing into three different things? Is that what they're trying to do? I just don't understand why that's in that first description. It should, you know, it seems to me that that is describing each one individually. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I'm going to pull my bylaw. I didn't bring it with me.
Hold on. You can borrow mine, but I'm just confused by the way it's written. So the second page of what you gave us, it has the definition section.
So definitions under Section 3.
Under Section 3, yep. So the first one's the 300.541, which defines the RMD.
Sure.
Okay? I get that. And each of the next three paragraphs defines each of the three things. The RMD, the Registered Marijuana Dispensary. The second one, the second paragraph, is the Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center. And I think the third one, Registered Medical Marijuana Distribution Center, is a combination of the two, I think, is what it is, right?
Dispensary Center does not include those activities such as cultivating. So that's the biggest difference between the cultivation center and the dispensary center, that the action of cultivating is not listed as an appropriate. center, that the action of cultivating is not listed as an appropriate activity under dispensary center.
So in the first paragraph, the last kind of line, it says, unless otherwise specified, an RMD refers to the site of dispensing, cultivation, distribution, and preparation of marijuana. So that makes sense because it fits with the first paragraph, right?
Sure.
I'm confused by why then they define the other two in that same paragraph. For the purpose of this bylaw, RMD shall be referred to as a Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center, and RMMDC, aren't they just defining the next two paragraphs? Why is that like that? It's just confusing to me.
Because, well, I mean, the suggestion is that RMD is the language that is familiar to probably a lot of people that are in the industry. And I think the activities in each of those subsequent definitions are specific that the RMD definition on 300.541 does list all of those activities, which includes cultivation. So if you were in another town that didn't have the separation of the cultivation activity and the dispensing activity, your RMD would be any of those types of activities. So for the purposes of this bylaw, basically, we're using the language of the state's language, however, in the table of uses. And when someone would be to submit a special permit, they would be asking for either an approval for a Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center or a Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Center.
Okay, so would it be fair to say then you don't really need that in the last line in each paragraph because we define each one separately, right?
I mean, you can, if you want to strike it, I don't think that there would be an issue with that. I think, though, that because, and there would be no issue because in the table of uses, those subsequent definitions are uses that are allowed as per the bylaw. Again, the only reason why I think that sentence is there is because those are the specific uses and the specific activities per those uses that a special permit, you know, would be submitted.
So I think your explanation is it could be done either way, is what you're saying. It just confused me the way it was written. That's why I thought it'd be clear not to have it, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Council Steve?
Yeah, from my understanding of this and going through the process and passing through the public hearings and so forth, I think that it actually makes sense to leave it there because of the fact that the way the state law does it is that first paragraph. And then, but we are making a distinction that state law doesn't necessarily make. So for the, on the local level, we are specifically making a distinction between the cultivation center and the dispensary center. And if you notice the way it breaks down, most of the activities overlap except for cultivation, and it specifically mentions for the cultivation center that it has to go to a qualified Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center. And the dispensary centers themselves, it refers to acquiring them as opposed to cultivating them because we're not allowing those places to cultivate, if I understood what the intention was. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman?
Council Steve, answer my question.
Thank you. Any further discussion tonight? Okay, oh, Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. First of all, thank you to Mr. Comeea for answering that question presented by the town manager. I just want to make a quick statement that I know that when this was first and initially presented to town council and then subsequently brought to public hearing, I was not at all pleased, and I made that very clear to members of the planning board. I appreciate the hard work, the effort, and the final document that has been presented to us because of their hard work, their effort, their research, their investigation, and what was assembled. I've read through this a few times. I don't recommend any changes. I'm happy to leave that last sentence in, just out of deference to the effort that was brought forth. I'd also like to make sure that the public is aware that there were members of this town council, including Councilor O'Clair and Councilor Steve that spoke up to see a revised draft which incorporated a number of changes, which you, Mr. Comeea, ended up researching, investigating, and presenting to the planning board. And I'm very grateful for your effort in that realm as well. So I know we're not voting tonight, it's the first reading, but I just wanted to make sure that I went on record to thank you and the planning board in particular for your effort on this very important topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
Thank you. Two minor things. Under Section 1902 applicability, it says, in the middle of the fourth line down, it says, establish as an RMD under this Section 19. That should be Article 19, not Section 19? I didn't catch that originally.
Okay, so I can't hear you, but if you could, whatever changes you have, if we can forward them so they incorporate it to the next reading.
So they send them to Ken, or who says?
Send them directly to you, Mr. Chairman.
To Ken, okay, okay. And the other question, and there's a question for Section 1901, which is, I was just curious, I didn't catch this originally when reading it. Why was local historic districts included in that section?
That was...
We don't really have one anyway, but...
No, we don't. I mean, the thing is, I guess, for future councils, and if a council were to adopt a historic district, this would provide that necessary protection. Again, if that's something that, at this point, you want to strike, it was language that was in other iterations of this bylaw.
I just didn't see it. I was curious about it because, I mean, we don't have one anyway, so if we were to create one, this would preexist anyway, so it wouldn't really make any difference.
Right, and, yeah, and the thing too with historic districts, I think there probably would be the question of whether or not that specific use in the historic district wouldn't allow a, an RMD. Also, if it was in a certain zone, again, you know, that would, you would be allowed to, through special permit, you know, get it.
I mean, personally, I see more historic district as being more of an architectural thing and far less of a use thing.
Sure.
So, but it's kind of a moot point since we're not, we don't have one anyway, so I was curious. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hemp is agriculture, marijuana is not. However, in regards to the historical districts, I'm not sure if I heard Council Steve's write that we have none, but we do have. I live in a historical district. The Maple Street area is historical, and it's seen by the state of Massachusetts as a historic district. It is listed as a historic district. So I appreciate that being in the bylaw.
All right.
So, yeah, I mean, yes, Maple Street, AO houses, all 100 years old, it's a historic district, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Ken, thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we move on to your next agenda item, I had a question of you and for you and for the council. I'm a little grainy, I haven't looked at this in a while, but when it comes to Roberts' rules and selection of vice chair, I did look a few weeks ago, and for some reason it's failing me tonight. Would a motion to reconsider be in order or simple consensus of the council for a member to reconsider his or her vote?
Well, we're within the meeting, so you could make a motion to reconsider a prior action, so.
Okay. So would it be acceptable for me to make a motion to reconsider my vote on item number nine, selection of vice chair?
So, yeah, so you want to reconsider and come back up to vote to the town vice chair?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. What's that? I have no opposition. So you want to have, you have any further discussion, or you want to just do a revote?
I'd like to just make a statement since I'm going to change my vote.
Okay.
Actually, there has to be a second on the floor. I'll second it.
To reconsider.
Thank you.
Motion to reconsider is a second.
A second.
Okay.
Okay. I know that we've had a lot of discussion about this. The community's been waiting. The town charter is very clear on the matter, in my opinion, and if you don't mind me, indulge me, it's just a couple of sentences from Section 9, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson of the Town Council. 2-9-1, on the first regularly scheduled meeting on or after July 1, following the town elections and after newly elected members shall have taken office, the council shall organize itself and elect one of its members to serve as Chairperson of the council and the Vice Chairperson of the council, both for a term expiring, et cetera. To me, I agree with Councilor O'Clair, we have been out of compliance, and as much as I'd like to stand firm with my vote, I would much rather see that we adhere to the charter. I recall the first vote that was taken when Councilor Morales wasn't present. Councilor DePietro spoke positively about Councilor Steve's. While I can take some heat for this, it is my opinion that Councilor DePietro may have voted the same way tonight. So with that, I would like to change my vote from Councilor Adams to Councilor Steve's in the interest of the community moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you, Rick. So is there any else that wishes to reconsider their vote at this time? So we have Council Nash changing his vote to Councilor Steve's. Anything further? Councilman?
Should we have a new roll call vote on us?
Yeah, well...
A new roll call vote?
Roll call, yeah, we'll do a new roll call. So, Madam Chair? I'm in. Madam Secretary? It's been a long day. Yes.
What are we voting on?
So, Mr. Council Nash has voted to, made a motion to reconsider the ballot, so he wishes to change his, change his motion to reconsider the vice chair's vote, so.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we actually need to vote on the motion to reconsider before we actually vote.
Just for me.
No, no. No, we have to make a motion, so there's a motion, a second to reconsider. I think we did vote on...
We haven't voted on reconsideration.
Okay. So, all those in favor of reconsideration?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's been a vote to reconsider the vote of the Town Council Vice Chair. Council Nash has expressed his wish to revote, so I'll ask for a roll call vote on this matter. Okay? So the roll call vote will be vote for the person that you wish to be vice chair. We have Council Steve or Council Adams?
Council Daniel?
Adams.
Council Jovan?
Steve.
Council Manna?
Steve.
Council Morales?
Steve.
Council Nash?
Steve's.
Council Steve?
Steve's.
Council Adams?
Adams.
Council O'Clair?
Adams.
Congratulations, Council Steve.
Thank you.
I look forward to, now that, thank you, Council Nash, as we move forward. I can honestly state, in the month and a half as chairman, I've been impressed by everybody on the council. We are all working hard together, and I have no doubt that we will continue to work hard throughout all the committees, so, thank you. Council's forum, start with Council Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to thank Council Nash for stepping up and doing that reconsideration. I may not be here next Monday for the next meeting, so I have orientation for school, so I have to look at my schedule. Also, I would like to, I would like to thank Chief DeFranzo. I know Friday was his last day, but he did serve as firefighter and as fire chief for our town. I would like to thank him. And I do believe the interim chief that we have now will do a fine job, and I look forward to being updated on the process, and I look forward to the August 28 PPP meeting. So if you have concerns, or you just want to hear what's going on with our fire department and our police department, I suggest that you attend. School's starting pretty soon, so, you know, be careful. I see the buses out already, you know, some of them, so, that's it. It's hot. Thank you.
Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I apologize, I couldn't take it anymore, I had to lose my tie. Couple of things tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank resident Ryan Servant for donating the equipment that should have gone live for live streaming tonight's town council meeting on the Southbridge Community Television YouTube channel. I don't know that it actually did take place, but I stepped into cable access before this meeting, and it looked like Jim was prepared to give it a shot, so I hope that went well. Also, I'd like to echo what Councilor Manna said and thank Chief DeFranzo for his many years, more than a decade, I can't remember if it was 14 or 16 years of service to the town of Southbridge, and wish him all the best in his role in the town of Upton. And while I don't recall us mentioning this name at the last meeting, another gentleman who I think had 31 or 34 years of service to the town in the police department was Officer Dwayne Ledoux. I know that there's a video out there, but I haven't watched it at length. I just remember my years working as a registrar, and Officer Ledoux, while he took his duty extremely seriously and worked extremely hard, he was a pleasure to get to know on election days. A lot of folks knew him. He was, he's a great man, and I wish him all the best in his next endeavors. Also want to thank the town manager and DPW director, Heather Blakely, for, at my request, back at the end of July, putting up the historical data and charts relative to water and sewer rate history that I'd been asking for. If people haven't seen them, you go to the Town of Southbridge webpage, you can click on the DPW department, and then from there along the left, there is a section that talks about water and sewer rates. You can look at historical data for the last four years in table form or in charts. Thank you very much. I know that there's a qualifying statement there because of the way that people look at the historical rate information, and it's always a hot topic, but that statement is very clear on the reasons that we have had increases, especially on the sewer side for the last several years. Also want to point out that it's been more than two weeks since we had our July 25 Goals and Objectives meeting. I don't want to lose sight of that. The town manager is required to have goals and objectives, and I'm pleased that we had a conversation about council goals as well. I hope we don't lose sight of that as a priority. I'm chomping at the bit to get it done so we can move on and start working on these priorities. I know sometimes I'm long-winded, but tonight I'll just make one last statement that in the coming weeks, I don't have a timeframe, I may be absent at some meetings, I have some personal circumstances to deal with, everything's going to be fine, but if I'm not able to attend a meeting, please don't think anything's wrong. I'll make sure I communicate with the chair when I miss a council meeting, and with Councilors Daniel and Adams when it comes to EHS, and Councilor DePietro when it comes to DPW. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for mentioning, well, certainly Chief DeFranzo, I wish him the best of luck and thank him for his service at Southbridge. I neglected that, I apologize. Please do watch the Officer Ledoux video because it has gone national. It is quite a positive, sorry to see him leave the police department, but if anything, it is a positive spin that you finally see on national news. It's gone viral, and it's hit, as a former police chief, I belong to a lot of law enforcement sites, and it's hit almost every single law enforcement site in the country as well. So congratulations to him as well. Council Morales?
Thank you, Chairman. I also had in my notes to congratulate Officer Ledoux for his retirement, and also the video that went viral throughout the nation. Very proud to say he served in our community. Also, just a heads up for the Southbridge Autumn Fest, September 22 at the Town Common, put together by the Southbridge Business Partnership. Also, today Red Cross was in town at La Salle Hall for blood donations. They will be back in October. I can get the details together and report it here before it happens as well for blood donations.
Thank you, Council Morales. Council Adams?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Dwayne, and I wish Mark the best in his new adventure, in his new town. I want to congratulate Councilor Steve on his victory. I look forward to working with you, both the chair and the vice chair. I want to thank the Senior Center for having me the other day, being able to speak to the group as a whole and then individual residents, and it's a pretty impressive site there at the Senior Center, but I want to thank them again for having me. I want to thank Councilors O'Clair and Daniel, and Chairman Jovan for the hard effort last Friday night at trivia night to raise funds for the Senior Center, though out of four categories, we were on top, first three, and then we kind of blew it at the very end. But it was a fun time, a lot of laughter going on, and I posted a picture of all four of us on the website. I want to thank Rosemary, Ken, and Rose. I want to thank you for your progressive stance, your thought process, your thinking outside the box, and allowing me to come in and listen to what you have to say, and working together as a team for the movement of this town when it comes to economic development and planning, the Central Street, a few other things that are going on from the zoning bylaws. bylaws to the movement of businesses within the town. So I want to thank you guys for the hard work that you do. And last but not least, I wasn't sure I was going to say this, but, so I saw today on Facebook, the cops and kids, if they had like 10,000 views, that they would have to, I think it was Deputy Chief, he would have to do, slip a slide. So, and then I saw a bunch of people doing donations or whatever it may be, and I saw Southbridge Credit Union, another family giving up like $500 here, $500 there, $100 per police officer. So I need, I need to have Chief Woodson's approval on this, but I'm willing to, my wife and I decided that we donate $100 to have, and I got to get approval, but we'd like to donate $100 towards the cops and kids if the town manager would do that.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. I know. I know what I told you earlier, I lied.
Yeah, I guess you did.
And we'd also like to donate $100 to MDA Boot Drive for the fire department and all the things that they do, so, well, your challenge is up, buddy, so good luck to you.
Sure.
I'll talk to Chief tomorrow. Thanks, have a good day. That's all I have. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that challenge?
Quickly.
The answer is clearly yes. Anything for the kids in Southbridge, I'd be happy to accept that challenge.
Council Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for those of you who voted to make me the vice chair, Rick, thank you for considering it. And I will do the best job that I can. Also, I wanted to say good luck to Dwayne and Mark for going into, for taking a step in, in their own lives, that, I hope it's, I hope it's what you want to do and that your life goes well. A couple of things. One is a question through you to the town manager. I got a call about Hunter's Ridge Plowing, and I was wondering where things stand as far as where, where that, where that process stands and when we're going to end up having to vote on authorizing plowing again for this year.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for the question. This is an issue that we clearly have to deal with for this winter. As you remember, we only approve plowing for the one year, so we will be doing it again for this year. I will be bringing it forward to town council. The attorney that is representing the town in terms of the case, as you know, we're looking at taking the road by eminent domain, is working on that right now. I've discussed once again with the owner of the road who is willing to move forward and help us with any paperwork. That's still in play. The bank has not been cooperative in that process, so the town is going to move forward. I can tell you that the attorney has been working with Heather to specifically design the exact taking of the land, and that's where it's at at this point, so I'm not quite sure if they're close to finishing. I suspect that they are because they've been working on it some time. So as soon as we specify exactly what land we're going to be taking, it's the attorney's plan to move forward with that eminent domain issue. And that, obviously, will be talking, probably, my guess, in October about bringing forward another resolution for this winter.
Okay. A couple of, a couple of other points. One is that, I noticed, I noticed how kind of halfway through the meeting that we forgot to put the transfer for the landfill royalties on this agenda. It went through GenGov, and we approved it unanimously, but we forgot to put it on this agenda, so it needs to go on next Monday.
I'm sorry, Council Steve, I'm having a very, very hard time hearing you. I'm not sure, it's about the landfill issue, I heard, but...
When we, when we talked to GenGov about approving the transfer of landfill royalties to cover the, to cover the lawsuit, we forgot to put it on this agenda, so we need to put it on next week.
Yeah, so we're going to have to add that to the next agenda, you're right. So, just to be clear what the issue is, obviously, we're in court with Casella over the issue of curbside collection. We have to transfer additional $200,000 like we did last year to, from the royalty account to the legal account. We will be doing that, and it's our intention, I've been working with Jack, to put it on the next agenda.
Right. Okay, thanks. And also, for those of you who remember the 2011 tornado, you might have noticed that Webster got hit by one a couple of days ago, too. So they're, they're kind of, it's, it's not nearly as severe as the kind of damage that Southbridge saw, but there are some people who have been knocked out of their homes, some businesses that are knocked out of their homes, out of their facilities. Some of the buildings have been knocked down downtown on Main Street and Webster. One of the facilities that is actually going to be in some need of some assistance, I mentioned, I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, is the Blessed Backpack Brigade. They help, they help the homeless and senior citizens and other people who are kind of in need. And they are going to be, they need some help with supplies because of the tornado hit their, what they call the cave, which is their, basically their warehouse, it's underwater. And what's, whatever they, whenever they get in there, they will probably not be able to salvage like half of the stuff that they've got, so. So they'll, they're especially in need of clothing and basic toiletries and tents and sleeping bags and canned goods and that kind of stuff. So if anybody has some of that kind of stuff, they, you can go to their Facebook page, they have collection boxes at the Dudley, Dudley Police Department and Webster Town Hall that I know of. There are probably other places as well. So that's, that's a good cause in there. They, they do a little bit in Southbridge, they don't do as much in our town, they're primarily Dudley and Webster focused, but homelessness is, is an issue that affects everybody, so they could use some help. And the last point I wanted to mention is that for those of you who are interested in, in theater, there's a couple of interesting plays going on this weekend. One is Thursday, the 16th, it's a free, it's a free play of As You Like It at French River Park in Webster. And the other one is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, as the Gateway is doing Rocky Horror Show at the cannery here in town. So get out there and have some fun with them and check them out. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Council Steve. Council O'Clair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a couple of quick things. Thank you to the councilors who invited me to the trivia night, that was a lot of fun. We did all right, we did all right. Also, I wanted to just quickly, there was a block party that was scheduled this past weekend up at the community center, or, actually, it was 168 Morris Street, that has been rescheduled because it was rained out, and it is now going to be September 3, which is Labor Day, from 4 to 8 p.m. And I had the opportunity to go to a fundraiser for Puerto Rico last night, and, you know, there were some really interesting presentations by Antonio Fonseca about, you know, the history of art in Puerto Rico, and a lot of local talent was showcased with poetry, with photography, with some painting. And I just, the organizers did a really good job, and it, it was just a good reminder as to, you know, we have a really vibrant, really amazing culture and, you know, art scene in this, in this town. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to comment on that publicly because I was, I was really, really pleased and really impressed with that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First, I'd like to thank Ron Plouffe and the town manager for the tour that I got at the airport last week. We have a gem of a facility up there. It was wonderful to see it, to see it up close. We did a little four-wheeling around the facility, and it was quite the education. Ron Plouffe, as should be justified, will be proud of the facility that he has up there. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Ken Comia. He received a credential from the American Institute of Certified Planners. It's a big deal, and anyone who is able to improve themselves for their benefit by going to the effort that he did certainly deserves congratulations and a huzzah. I've been fortunate to, to speak with citizens over the last couple of weeks, and to a T, everyone said that they didn't want to be a bother, they didn't want to be trouble. And I just want to tell people that it is never a bother. Sometimes it's uncomfortable, but it is never a bother for you to come to me, or to I'm sure any of the councilors, to talk about issues that you have with things that are going on in town. If you don't let us know what's going on with you, then we're not in the best position to make the decisions that we need to make. So I thank those people that have spoken to me for the last couple of weeks, and I encourage you to continue to approach me and to approach the other councilors with your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Steve, discussion, next meeting date?
I think our next meeting is scheduled for the Monday, August 20 at 7 p.m. here in the chambers.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have a quick question. Actually, I should have asked this a few minutes ago. Do we have another, is there going to be another meeting to discuss the goals and objectives sometime soon?
Yes, there will be. I think, what's transpired, we had so many subcommittee meetings lined up with a lot of issues, then we also had vacations scheduled in here, so certainly we will get a date after next week, we'll, we'll schedule some meetings.